I know. So sad. But I'm like, until I hear three. How do you know?
Hello, Finn.
Hey, how are you doing?
Oh, living the dream here.
Same.
Father, Father Stephen, would you like to lead us in prayer before the meeting begins?
It'll be an Orthodox prayer, so I might know.
I don't feel like anybody's opposed to it, and no one should feel compelled to participate in this if they so wish not to.
It's not compulsory.
It's not compulsory.
All right.
The meeting hasn't begun.
Are you ready, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Right. Well, I'll say the prayer of the Holy Spirit that the Orthodox say with the human effort. Will heavenly kingdom comfort your spirit of truth to whatever present and frivolous things, but treachery of every good and disorder of life come and dwell in us and cleanse us of all impurity and save our souls of good heart.
All is being in order. Those in attendance, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the eternal holy which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome all our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled May first, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting. As you come in tonight, which would be to my right, but to everybody else's left, there's a desk in between the double doors right there. There's a sign-in sheet on that desk. If you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, Councilman Morrissey.
Here.
Palladino.
Pratt.
Here.
Sher.
Here.
Sola.
Present.
Stuccio.
Here.
Veer.
Here.
Wolfram.
Here.
And Mayor Stockford.
Here.
All present here.
Thank you, Katie. I received an email from Mr. Ted Jansen, said that he was not going to be present tonight because of an illness, so I would request that be removed. Would be, where's the, would be new business item C, Jansen FOIA appeal from the agenda. Is there any other changes that any council members or city manager have to make to the agenda tonight?
Mayor, I do have, Mayor, I do have one item that I would like to add, which is just a resolution recognizing Cheryl Cox, yours of service to the city as she is retired.
Fair enough. Do I have a motion to remove item number C from new business and to add item letter D to miscellaneous reports, which would be a resolution recognizing Cheryl Cox?
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We have an agenda. We will move into public comment on agenda items only. During this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. And please make sure that whatever you're speaking on has a direct tie to something present on the agenda tonight. Before we go any further, if you're here to speak about the library ordinance amendment, we will have a public comment period during the public hearing for that specifically. So just giving it to you fair. Also, sometimes I let people go over on the time limit tonight. I will be keeping a very close track of it just because there's so many people here. So if I cut you off and I say your time is up, I'm really not being rude. Just want to give everybody a chance to be heard. So the podium is now open.
Anything on the agenda?
Anything on the agenda?
Except the library. So the library will not be discussed tonight?
No, there's, we're having a public hearing on the library, so there will be a special public comment period designated for that alone during the public hearing. Going on?
I think we're all over the library.
Okay. Seeing no public comment, we'll close the podium and we'll move into the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city and BPU claims of April thirteenth, payroll of April thirteenth, city council minutes of April seventeenth, BPU minutes of March fourteenth, finance minutes of April seventeenth, community development minutes of April twentieth, and a financial investment report as of March thirty-first. Is there any discussion on any items present in the consent agenda? Seeing no, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrissey, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we will move into communications petitions, and you're gonna have to excuse me for one moment as I get caught up in my packet. But the first item is A, item number, item letter A, excuse me, grant finding opportunity, optimize Main Street program. Dave, do you have anything to add to this? So I get to it.
Sam, would you like to come up and speak to this quickly?
So a letter that we sent out to local businesses was included in the packet for you guys to review as well as share with your constituents. What this is, is a grant program through the M E D C. It's an opportunity for the city to select two place-based businesses within the city to submit them in an application for a twenty-five-hundred-dollar technology grant. So the optimized mission, or optimized Main Street program is intended to parallel businesses with coaching, help them with technology integration, things to increase the efficiency of their operations. So we sent that email out, and we're looking for businesses that are interested in participating, and that also includes the eligibility requirements.
Okay, any questions? Sam, Councilman Wolfram?
So I was just curious, you sent this out to the local businesses?
Well, we sent it out to the businesses that are on our business directory. We also included it in the council packet in case there were any that were missed. So we're trying to get this information out to all of our businesses.
Councilman Sola, did you have something to add to that?
I was just curious, is it something that those businesses have to submit the application, and then it comes to council for approval?
No, so businesses that are interested in applying would let me know. My email and phone number are in there. And then there is a business worksheet that has to be filled out, and then we'd select two. So the city chooses two to submit with that grant, and we actually fill out the application. So we work with them to gather the information that's needed.
Councilman Veer?
And Sam, the deadline for that, for those businesses turning in?
That's right. So we've asked them to get it to us by, I believe it says in there, Friday, let's just say, May nineteenth, or the twelfth, Friday, May twelfth. So that's the deadline for them to let us know if they're interested, and at that point, we'll make our selection and work with them to help them apply.
Any more questions? Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move to item B in communications petitions, which is Ted Jansen's letter. I feel like Ted would be upset if I didn't read this, so I'm gonna read through it real quick. Mayor Stockford, members of Hillsdale City Council, attached to this letter are emails that will clarify the process as to how Dan Larue was selected by the Hillsdale Community School District as their representative to serve as trustee on the Hillsdale Community Library Board. Also attached is an email from Joshua Palladino to Georgia Ellen detailing his plans to curate books and what will be banned. There is a letter from Patrick Flannery withdrawing as a trustee candidate respecting the decision of the school board and his desire not to turn this into a controversy. Lastly, is a letter from Ms. Lauren Spencer stressing her dismay over whether Mr. Stockford or Mr. Palladino is telling the truth as their stories contradict each other. There are multiple emails on some pages in that, that the originated emails are juxtaposed. As the last email to be read on the printout, so I'll have numbered the emails starting with one as the original email proceeding to higher numbers which correspond to the latest email on each chain. It is very unfortunate and not in the best interest of our community that identity politics have become the driving force behind the proposed ordinance or the slippery slope and Mr. Palladino's desire to effectuate a single line of thought in the curation of books in our community library. Many of his proposals, such as placing the Harry Potter series of books in the adult section of the library is a violation of the First Amendment, per case law, as are many of his other ideas. I am asking this council mayor to take a step back and reject the changing of the ordinance and not divide our city into opposing factions as seen in our state and national politics. Thank you for your understanding, Ted and Jansen. Any discussion on this? You banning Harry Potter, Josh?
Totally possible.
Okay. Okay, we'll move into item C, M R C Spring twenty-twenty-three newsletter. Now, I gotta get caught up because Ted's got a lot of emails in the packet. Mitchell Research Center, uh, Mitchell Research Center newsletter detailing the Hillsdale County ice storms. As you guys all know, we had a pretty serious one this year. Looks like there was a big one in March thirty-first of nineteen twenty-two that left many trees and limestone, limestone. It's interesting. Lot of good stuff in this newsletter. Any discussion on this item?
Just that they, they do have a very nice newsletter and, and some very interesting things in there, like about the fight at the, in the keeper house, and all sorts of interesting stuff.
Thank you, Councilman Wolfram. Yeah, they do a great job. They really do. All volunteers too, not a single penny. So any more discussion on this item? Okay, we will move into communications petitions, item letter D, library ordinance amendment. Councilman Palladino?
Uh, this is what I read at the committee meeting, so I think most everyone has heard it, but if you want, I can read it again.
You submitted it itself to you. If you want to read it, you can. If you want to move past it, then we can, we can talk about it during discussion in public hearing, or however you want to do it.
I'll read it real quick. I've had too much more time, but, um, so I'll give a few reasons for the ordinance and then a few of my responses to the criticisms of it. I'll argue that the ordinance proposal upholds the authority and responsibility of the mayor's office, defends the principle of no taxation without representation for the city's taxpaying citizens, and protects the city as an independent and self-governing political body. The ordinance proposal would ensure authority and responsibility in the mayor's office. In using the word responsibility, I mean that the mayor should be responsible for all of the city's boards and commissions. I counted nineteen boards and commissions on the city's website. This sprawling board and commission system means that political authority in Hillsdale is deeply divided and widely distributed. In addition to the board and commission system, the city divides power among its employees and contractors. These divisions make it difficult for citizens to locate the source of political authority, which slowly undermines democratic control, trust, and participation. The mayor of Hillsdale is a weak executive office, but the mayor does have authority over one thing, hiring employees and nominating candidates for boards and commissions. There's a long quote that basically the, the mayor has authority over everything in the city in terms of appointments. When citizens want political reform, they should have a clear and direct avenue to seek it. They should have the opportunity to hold one executive official, the mayor, or a few legislative officials, the council members, accountable. They should not have to navigate a system that makes final political responsibility so difficult to locate. The current ordinance gives the mayor an out. If the public approves of his decision, then he can accept praise for his wise nomination. If the public disapproves of his decision, he can deflect criticism and state that, in practice, he had no authority over the outcome because a forty-four-year-old ordinance restricted him. This has disastrous effects on democratic politics. It shows the public that the mayor, despite being the highest-ranking official in the city, does not have the authority to represent the people's beliefs, interests, and needs. It shows the public that their political participation will not influence the city's personnel or policy decisions. It shows that their decision to contribute to a candidate's campaign, to knock doors, to vote, will not necessarily alter the political process. As soon as this happens, the democratic process becomes ineffective and infuriating. But there is another course available. If this ordinance passes, the mayor will be forced to make a disputed decision, but the decision will be entirely his own. The public will have complete clarity about his political positions, and then about the council's acceptance of that or not. Then the mayor must take his case to the people without the plausible deniability that comes from the ordinance provision. Second, the ordinance, as currently written, violates the principle of no taxation without representation by preventing Hillsdale citizens from having full control of the library board. At the same time, it grants representation to citizens who do not pay the library's property tax operating millage. The argument follows from two universally acknowledged ideas. First, only citizens who reside in a certain political jurisdiction, whether a township, city, state, or otherwise, pay taxes to that jurisdiction. Second, only the citizens in the taxpaying jurisdiction have the right to political representation. This means that citizens outside the taxpaying jurisdiction are not entitled to representation in that jurisdiction. The current ordinance does not adhere to these standards. The citizens of the city of Hillsdale do not independently elect school board members. The school board chooses to elect its representatives from out-large districts. These districts include the townships outside the city. The out-large elections give townships the ability to sway the election, so the city's voters could narrowly choose candidate A over candidate B, but the townships voters could choose candidate B over candidate A by a wide margin, thus giving the victory to candidate A in defiance of the wishes of the citizens of the city of Hillsdale. When the time came for the mayor to nominate a school board member to the library board, he would not have any choice that had Hillsdale citizens truly preferred. The school board's out-large election process gives the townships the ability to control a seat on the city's library board, preventing Hillsdale citizens from having full representative control of their institutions. The townships have no rightful claim to govern the city's library. The townships do not pay into the property tax millage that supports the library, so they have no right to representation. The current ordinance, combined with the changing borders of the Hillsdale Community School District, also creates an odd situation in which the library seat could remain vacant. By statute, the Hillsdale Community School Board must have one seat on the Hillsdale Community Library Board. The Hillsdale Community School Board does not draw out representatives exclusively from the city of Hillsdale. Representatives can and do come from the entire school district, which extends well outside the city's boundaries and into the outlined townships. This means that some of the school board's trustees are ineligible for the library board seat due to their residence outside of the city of Hillsdale. This further restricts the mayor's appointment power, but a worse outcome could occur if all of the school board representatives lived outside of the city of Hillsdale, then the mayor would lack the authority to fill the seat at all. In principle, then, the current ordinance could force the seat to remain vacant due to ineligible- inability. Third, the mayor and the city council should not share the city's authority to spend tax dollars with separate political bodies. The school board has different names than the city library, and organizations with different names should be governed independently. Furthermore, the school board appropriated one hundred eighty thousand dollars for library services during the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. In the most recent budget, Hillsdale's library director submitted a proposed budget of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The budgetary situation does not justify the school board's partial control over the city's funds. By far the most, okay, so turning to criticisms of it, the most common seems to be that the ordinance is older, and it's well-established, and it's worked well. I'm sympathetic to tradition and precedent. I think the burden of proof is on me to prove that this is no longer a good ordinance. I don't think we should change things lightly. But almost all children attended public schools forty years ago. Today, the available evidence indicates that about sixty percent of Hillsdale's children attend public schools, though because the school district borders are not the same as the city borders, it's hard to determine accurately. But there are about eight hundred kids at Will Carlton, Hillsdale Prep, homeschool. Once again, it's hard, it's hard to pin down exactly. Third, the school system's budget has grown considerably in the past forty years. In the nineteen seventies, the school, the school district did not receive twelve thousand eight hundred dollars per student as it did in twenty-twenty-one. Just as in two thousand eleven, they only received eight thousand two hundred dollars per student, and they have significant library funds to provide services for their own students. The other criticism is that Jefferson and Hillsdale Township deserve to have representation at the library through the school board seat. So they're actually arguing actively that the outlying districts increase representation for people who should have it. But the townships are entering into a voluntary contractual agreement with the city. This isn't, the city cannot tax them, right? So if they want out of this agreement, they have to go to their representatives, or they have to, they have to appeal to the library directly. So it's not a power that the city has over them. It's only when, when, when the city has power to tax that you get the right to representation. A contractual agreement does not give the right to representation. And I gave the example of things like the BPU sharing services with other cities, right? We don't get political representation in Jonesville, Warren Cities in Ohio, but we, you know, we work reciprocally with them, and that's great. And I hope we continue to do that. And we, we recently calculated out Hillsdale and Jefferson Township's contributions to the city library compared to their, the number of citizens who actually enroll and get the library card membership, and they're getting a good deal. I think they're saving a few dollars per membership by, by doing that. And that's their prerogative, but it doesn't, it doesn't give the right to political representation. Yeah, I think I'll leave it about there.
Thank you, Councilman Palladino. Any questions for Josh? Okay. Alrighty, so we will move into introduction and adoption, adoption of ordinance's public hearing, which is the public hearing on the library ordinance amendment. Real quick here. The proposed amendment was presented at the March sixth, twenty-twenty-three council meeting by Councilman Palladino for review and consideration. The amendment is attached for the public hearing. So I'm gonna open the public hearing now, and I'm gonna read you the ordinance, and then what we'll do is we will have public comment period first, so everybody can say their piece. One moment, sir. Proposal to amend city ordinance. The current ordinance states the library board shall consist of five directors appointed by the mayor with the approval of city council. The directors to be chosen from the citizens of the city at large with reference to their fitness for office, provided, however, that not more than one member of city council shall be a member of the library board at any one time, provided further that one such member shall be a member of the Board of Education of the Hillsdale Community Schools. The proposal would amend the ordinance as office. The library board shall consist of five directors appointed by the mayor with the approval of city council. The directors to be chosen from the citizens of the city at large with reference to their fitness for public office, provided, however, that not more than one member of the city council shall be a member of the library board at any one time, essentially eliminating that last such, that last sentence, not changing the ordinance in any other way. So you guys have the gist of it, and I will open up the podium for public comment. Please limit your trips to one to the podium. Please limit your comments to two minutes. And please understand, if you're speaking at this time, it has to be directly about this ordinance here. Podium's now open.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor Stockford, honorable members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Father Stephen Allen. We are residents of Ward Four, and I'm the pastor of a small flock of Orthodox Christians here in Hillsdale. Though my wife and I have only lived here for eight years, my Allen ancestors actually were among the first settlers of Lenaway County, our neighbor, and I'm very proud and happy to be back in our beloved southern Michigan, and we hope to make this our home for the duration. All of the arguments presented in the previous committee meeting, which I attended and just listened to, all of the arguments presented in the previous committee meeting for and against the measure in question will no doubt be repeated tonight. The arguments in favor of changing the ordinance are all based on reason and sound judgment. Any one of them should compel a vote in favor of the change. All the arguments presented so far against the proposed change, they've been a mixture of irrelevancies and ad hominem attacks and appeals to emotion. Therefore, unless against all expectation, heretofore unheard of- Therefore, unless against all expectation, heretofore unheard of rational and compelling arguments against the measure are articulated prior to your vote, there's no good reason not to approve the change in the ordinance. Opponents of the measure have accused Councilman Palladino in his capacity as a member of the library board of initiating a controversy that has divided the city. I'd rather not talk about this. Ideally, at this meeting, you debate the measure strictly on its merits as good legislation. That's what we prefer. But in the preparatory committee meeting, opponents of the measure insisted on speaking of a wider political issue related to tonight's topic. No doubt they will do so again tonight, and so I feel compelled to address it. So opponents of the measure have accused Councilman Palladino in his capacity as a member of the library board of initiating a controversy that has divided the city. This is not true.
Father Stephen, your two minutes is up, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize too. I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it's not true, and we owe him our support.
Thank you, Father Stephen.
Hi, I'm Joe Mason. I live in the community, and I just want to address this real quick. I'm retired military, retired law enforcement. I served under Governor Brownbeck's, a couple of his advisory boards, and I live in Kansas. Supposed to be cleaning horse stalls, but I've been coming up here a lot with a couple of subjects, but I want to talk about this real quick. I do not think it's good legislation. There's a couple of things that I agree with, but it needs to be, it needs to be scrapped and redone. My opinion, what needs to happen? The board needs to be seven people and a library board. One council member, and one from each ward, and one from each township that pays taxes to their township to come here. That council member is only there for voting, just to break any tide votes. That's my opinion. And each council, one person from each ward, that means whoever, Ward Four, they send up a person to that ward that represents Ward Four, and then that, that council member sends it to the mayor for, to get voted on. That's my opinion. I don't agree with this being good legislation. I think it's bad. And I've been in politics for a long time, retired now, clean horse stalls, getting dragged back into it a little bit, but yeah, this is not good. I'm an independent, not Republican. One quick thing for all the citizens up here, and I said this at, at, at the county the other day, the rhetoric in Hillsdale County needs to stop. Either you're Democrat, Republican, or if you, if you're part of these two fractions going on, or if you're from the college, if you're from the city, the rhetoric in this county needs to stop because we set the standard. It's at the state level, it's at the federal level, and you all see what's going on at the state right now. One's like, that one-sided, one lopsided government, and you get multi-bills being passed. We need to stop this. This library thing needs to stop. Josh, that's my other thing. If you, if there's going to be a council member on there, he is voted on as a citizen. He's a city council now. I think the city council needs to revote, see if they still want him there. If you still want him there, he's there.
Joe, your time is up, sir.
Ryan.
Thank you. Daniel Obrue, Ward Four. I don't, I will not apologize for wanting to serve the community, but I do want to apologize to the, the community. Because I feel like if it was someone else up here, it wouldn't have been proposed, this ordinance. I feel like it's because of me. So I am sorry to the community. I'm not sure what I've done or who I have funded to cause all of this. So I ask my council members from Ward Four to please vote no, and I also ask all the council members to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Joanne Heller, Ward One. The decision-making behind the removal of a specified spot for a Hillsdale Community Schools board member on the library board is convoluted. It is not about fair representation for all the different schools in the city. It is not about representation of Hillsdale and Jefferson Townships. It is not about taxation without representation. It is not about the mayor's unilateral right to appoint whom he wishes to the library board. Those are red herrings, distractions, to pull attention away from the real reason for this proposed change in the charter, allowing the censorship of books by a smug group of people who feel they have the moral obligation to make decisions for all parents. Taking away the freedom and liberty for all parents to decide what they want their children to read is incredibly consequential. Any censorship decisions need to follow the established procedures at the library when someone opposes the presence of a book. Transparency is essential. In responding to a complaint about a book for a library, from a library patron, the library board should read the book and discuss the reason, reasons for censoring it. The, if the library board recommends the removal of a book, council needs to be involved, not just the, the mayor, not just his responsibility. Each member should read the book and go on record by voting whether or not to censor it. As history has shown, liberties taken away can lead to the loss of subsequent liberties. We need to remember that we live in a democracy that defends the rights of everyone. This includes the right of each parent to determine what books are appropriate for their own children.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Sam Lehrer, Ward Three. At the outset, I'd like to make clear that I'm not here to say you should or should not have been appointed to the library board, nor do I have any doubt that the prior school board members who served on the library board did so in exemplary fashion. In other words, my support for Councilman Palladino's amendment has nothing to do with the ongoing controversy regarding library board. I believe that has standalone merits. That said, the controversy has revealed a fatal flaw in the system, and one that should be addressed immediately. That flaw being what happens if the requirement that a school board member must also serve on the library board threatens to contravene the discretion allotted to the mayor to make decisions to the best interest of the community? I am in the mind that accountability in government is best achieved when we empower our duly-elected officials, in this case, you standing in front of me now, to exercise the discretion in service of the community. Just because someone is on the school board does not make them immediately qualified for the library board. My mother-in-law is a librarian, and she can tell you that teachers, administrators, school board librarians, and board members, despite all working for the same organization, do not necessarily agree on how a library should be run. As is to say, there's no special claim to expertise on behalf of a school board member that warrants them an automatic seat at the table. A person's title does not determine their merit. If the mayor, who has entrusted to point all the other seats, believes that there's a better candidate to be found elsewhere, we should allow him to exercise that discretion. If his judgment turns out to be wrong, then we can hold him accountable at one of these meetings or the next election. That is in how, that is how you ensure good governance, that is how you ensure proper accountability. I trust the mayor, and I trust this council to do what's best for the community. I implore my neighbors to trust them as well, and more importantly, that you, the council, trust yourselves to the power that we wish to place in your hands and vindicate that trust by supporting the amendment Mr. Palladino has proposed to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehrer.
Josiah Limcott, Ward Four. I want to rise today in support of Councilmember Palladino's proposed amendment to the library board regulations. This is consistent with good government. We need to have accountability to the voters in the city when it comes to the management of the city's affairs, and our system unfortunately has a weak mayor and committee system in which it's very hard to determine who's actually in charge of what goes on in the city. The Hillsdale City Library is a part of the community. We fund our tax dollars to create the library, to buy the books that go there, and then to appoint the staff. And we, as the citizens of Hillsdale, deserve to have political accountability that's direct, and this legislation is going to get us closer to that, to that end state. And so I'm going to encourage all of you to support this, this amendment. It's wise, it's politically prudent, and it's consistent with the principles of good government. Many of the objections to this proposed legislation simply are incorrect. It is not censorship for the citizens of Hillsdale to determine what books go inside of the library through their representatives. We're not banning anyone from buying books and putting them in their home libraries. This is not a violation of anyone's rights. You are not being threatened or hurt. If we didn't have a library at all, no one's rights here would be defeated, destroyed, or impeded in any way. We spend money as a city on this institution. We deserve, as citizens, to have a say in how it is run. Again, I believe this legislation goes in a good direction in terms of giving authority to the mayor, and that way we can hold the mayor accountable for what goes on with the city library. So again, I want to encourage every member of the council to vote in favor of this amendment.
Mayor Stockford, members of the city council, and Jean Heisey, I live in Ward Four. Truthfully, this ordinance should have been changed years ago, but here we are. By updating, we can draw from the wealth of backgrounds and experiences of our Hillsdale citizens. A real bonus is that many of our Hillsdale folks are lovers. They love books. But loving books is, now it binds us together. What binds us together is this eight-and-a-half-by-eleven-inches sheet. It is the itemized list of my taxes. In the middle of this page is a seven-letter word which stands alone. It is the word "library." So the library board is the custodian of the library's resources, my tax dollars. Now, I don't mind paying taxes. I don't mind paying taxes. That is something to repeat. But I want to be well-represented on that board. All of us taxpayers have a vested interest and expect good outcomes in management and use of our dollars. By opening up board membership, we can take advantage of the talents of our citizens in this situation. Now, we may end up with several candidates who want to serve in this position, but I've come up with a devised, brief, initial screening, initial screening of three questions for any candidate who would like to serve. Number one, do you know how to read? Number two, are you a lover of books? And number three, are you a documented Hillsdale taxpayer? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Folks, it just dawned on me, I think when you got 15 seconds left on the microphone, I'm going to hold up my hand like this, so everybody knows if they're in the middle of making an important point, that their time period is about to come to an end, because I don't want anybody to feel like shorting it that they didn't get to say the most important thing they wanted to say. So podium is still open? Proceed.
Ready to go?
Yes, madam.
My name is Janelle Wilson, and I'm a voter from Ward One, and I hope I didn't step in front of anybody. When inclusion of a school board member was written in the library ordinance, I suspect it was to help encourage collaboration between the local education system and the community library. I support the idea of having such an appointment suggested by a group as honorable as our Hillsdale Community School Board, and the fact that we, as a community electorate, have already supported that board member through a public vote makes that person particularly credible. That one library board position is brought forth by the community school and brings with it an education-related point of view. In addition, the board member appointed by the school board can help ensure that decisions made are in the best interest of our most important stakeholders, the community students. Additionally, the public school board member already will have had an introduction to and experience in making decisions about a wide range of exceptionalities that public schools are tasked with and do so well navigating, specifically learning difficulties, as well as physical, sensory, and mental health challenges. This background would certainly help bring light to accessibility and other issues not forefront in the thoughts of other board members from other disciplines. Again, I'm Janelle Wilson. I vote from Ward One, in Ward One, and I support the ordinance staying as is, although where did the horse stall guy go? I would, I would think about that one too, so thank you.
Thank you, Janelle. Proceed, madam.
Hello, thank you for letting us talk. I believe that I do have a little bit of insight into this situation as someone who was a former library employee and current employee of the Hillsdale Community Schools. I do not represent the school in what I say here today. My words are my own. I just want to say that I feel, I feel powerless. I feel, as a voter from Ward Four, a taxpayer to the library, and an employee of the school, I feel powerless. I feel like, you know, before now, we had trouble filling the seats on the library board, believe it or not. It was a hard time. There were vacant seats, there were vacancies in the library. Now there's all this attention. So Josh, thanks. Thanks for bringing all of this attention to the library, to our town. It's national news. I've had articles written about me because of all of this. This is about the library and your proposal. And my question would just be a question, why now? That's my question. Why now? Why not? Why wasn't this your first attempt? And I, I truly believe, as just an observer here, this is the first time I've ever spoken to a city council, just an observer, you want a political career, and you have a lot of supporters, but it makes me feel really powerless, like because I didn't go to Hillsdale College, I have no say. Because I'm not already on a board, I have no say. You're on two. You have a lot of power. Or you don't. I don't know. But I just, I wanted the board, I wanted the city, all these people to just hear me. I feel powerless, and I, I'm pretty close to the situation, so take that for what it is. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. My name is Elizabeth Schlier. I'm a Ward One resident, library patron, mother. I am asking you to support the change, support Councilman Palladino's proposal, and I think there are lots of good reasons to support it, the taxation one being, being a very large one, but I'm involved in an educational group in this city that is not represented on the public school board. And in fact, there are quite a few educational enterprises in this city that are not represented on the school board. I respect the school board. I respect and value what Hillsdale Community Schools does. But I also think the number-one reason to support this proposal is what you see in this room, as the woman who preceded me mentioned. Suddenly, we're living in a time when there's tremendous interest in the library board and the library in the city of Hillsdale. To honor that interest, we should open all library positions to all residents. It's as simple as that. We should open all library positions to all residents. And hopefully, the response will be positive and a wide swath of the community, not limited to one board. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Stockford and members of the city council. I've spoken before, one board before this, and that was to try to get my property taxes lowered for the end of this year. I failed, but I appreciate what the lady before me said about liking to pay taxes because it does give us, does and should, as members of the city, power over, over what happens, over you guys, and over the politics in the town. I appreciate the simplicity of the ordinance change. It's a striking single phrase in the ordinance, but it has strong repercussions, and I appreciate it, and I encourage you all to vote in favor of it. The mayor ought to not, the mayor ought to have not only control over, but responsibility for the elections to the library. for the elections to the library board. He must have control over these elections because we, the taxpayers, have elected him as mayor of our city, and he represents us, as do the members of the library board. We have allowed the school board, and by extension, other mayors of other towns and taxpayers of other towns, to have influence in our city's politics for decades, as I understand it. I think this change should come now because it prevents other cities from having influence in our, in our library board, and empowers the members of the city again. I really appreciate the power that this change gives me as a taxpayer and gives our city as taxpayers because we can have influence over the library board again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Orgerio.
Timothy.
Thank you, Tim.
I'm on Ward 3. I paid thousands of dollars in the city of Hillsdale this last year and every year going back ten years plus. I want you to support, ask you to support Mr. Palladino's proposal to respond to some of the other comments. It's true, nobody's cared about the school board appointing a member to the library board. That wasn't Mr. Palladino's doing. This is occurring in little towns and cities all over the state of Michigan and all throughout the country, and it would have happened with or without Mr. Palladino in particular. So what do you do with this political issue? Do you punt it to the school board? Or do you solve it democratically? So in response to another comment, it was, there's a small group of people who want to censor books at the library. I'm not in favor of a small group of people censoring anything. Why not turn it over to the citizens of Hillsdale? Let them vote and decide. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ginger Novak, and I live in Ward 4. And you've heard from me before on this issue, but it occurred to me that back in 1979, I bought a brand-new Pontiac Firebird. Since I now live in Michigan, you know, I can say this. I don't know if they even make them anymore. But anyway, I did, and it had the coolest, cutting-edge cassette tape player. I was the envy of all my friends because I didn't carry around a ten-pound sack of eight-track tapes. I had a little teeny box of cassette tapes. Oh, I was so cool. Okay, so time passes, and you know what? I don't carry around a pack of cassette tapes anymore either. I use Pandora. I don't know what everybody else does. I know two or three of my friends use Sirius Radio, but here's the thing that I'm saying. What worked in 1979 may or may not be a great idea for 2023. I'm gonna tell you, at least in my opinion, let's reflect the population. We've got a changing face, our city has a changing face. Let's reflect that. Let's be inclusive. We hear that word all the time. Let's be inclusive to the homeschooling parents, to the parents who have chosen a different educational pathway. Not all of them have access to the public school libraries, and they depend on the community library. I want them to have representation on the library board. I don't think that's a bit out of line. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ginger.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name's Leslie Bennett-Grenada, and I live in Hillsdale, but my voting address is Cambria Township. I've lived here twenty-two years. I'm a family practice physician. I have raised my two children here, who are now twenty and eighteen. And I was elected and started serving on the Hillsdale Community Schools Board in 2019, so I'm now in my fifth of my six-year term. I have no interest in serving on the library board, so I do understand your point. I'm a Cambria Township resident. That probably would make me ineligible. But I'm here tonight for two reasons. One is the McCrity donor wanted this language, and he's sent letters to you, as well as to our board stating that. His daughters, I'm sorry, his daughters have reinforced that and sent letters to you and us on that. So I'm concerned about our tactics and our tone, and if you do make this change, I hope that you speak with them and explain your thinking and consider that this might affect future donors or any institution in the city of Hillsdale. My other concern is there have been comments made disparagingly about the Hillsdale Community School Board, and I would hope that we would be proud to work with each other and live together. So I'm pleased, at least the comments I'm hearing so far this evening are not disparaging, so that's good. But I want to remind folks that we live by laws and the citizens as well, and try to be open. And again, I hope the tone remains, no matter what you decide tonight, pleasant for us to get along in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Hi, I'm Patrick Tennis. I'm in Ward 1. I'm the father of four kids. And we are not in the Hillsdale City Schools, and I'm personally friends with families who are on the school board, people very involved. So certainly no disparagement, but we've made different educational choices, and you know, the city library is therefore going to be particularly important for us, given that we don't have access to the public school library. So I would like you to please vote yes, Councilman Palladino's amendment. Thank you.
I'm on Ward 4. I firmly disagree with the ordinance change to 262, 262. Mr. Palladino and several guests have commented that Hillsdale Community Schools was the only school back in the seventies, hence the reason that they were included on the position in the library board. In reality, St. Anthony's Catholic School was a K, was a one, first through eighth-grade school, and later became a kindergarten through sixth-grade school, so we did have another school at the time. Another point that was made was anyone in the community can run for, for election in order to vote for the Hillsdale Community School Board members, whether their children attend that school or not. The public, however, does not have reciprocal rights to run for election or vote for private and public charter schools, boards of education. These board members are appointed to serve and offered by the administration and voted on solely by the parents. So there isn't a reciprocal right for them to be on the other board. Another thing to note is the school board, so far, none of them have ever requested to see that our library board, nor have any of their individuals ever applied to be on our library board. I'd like to make an addition to Jean's comment about three reasons or the three requirements. I would like one requirement to be that the library board person that takes the seat on the library board is actually an active library patron with a card that they use and cares about our library. Because of privacy issues, I can't tell you who does or doesn't have a library card, but I can leave that to your imagination. Other people spoke that at the OG meeting, wanting more equal representation on the board. I'd like to point out right now, of the four seats on library board, three of us are from Ward 4. That's not very equal representation. Our city council has two representatives on each, or each ward has two representatives. Maybe we need to look at library board, being one representative from each ward, and perhaps the township, but I think the big thing is that someone cares about the library, that they just don't have a personal axe to grind. Several other guests have spoke about city council wanting that more parents are choosing home schools or private schools for the option. That's great that we have choices, but I would just like to remind people how many times a family of six chose a private school, but when their child with autism needed a service, they came to the public school. A homeschool parent that had a child with severe speech and language delay came to the public school. Community schools represent everyone, just like community libraries represent everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. The podium's still open.
Hi, my name is Leisha Taylor, Ward 4. I just want to, I've heard a lot of people say, Josh included, about representation. I will remind everybody that we voted Dan LaRue onto the school board. That was a vote. He didn't just magically appear there. We voted him in, us. We thought he would do a good job on the school board. He is a city, or a member of the Hillsdale city. He lives here. He cares about the library. You knew that Patrick wasn't gonna, Mr. Mayor, you knew that Patrick was stepping down, and it was unanimous that Dan was gonna go on there, and that's how we always have done it. So, not sure how this controversy started. Dan's an upstanding member. He was voted in by us, we the people. Should have been a no-brake. Not sure how this started, but I think I'm looking at the person who did it.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Nathan Schlieder. I'm in Ward 1. We've lived here since 2005. We do have nine children library cards, and we've used them a lot over the years. I teach at the college, and I live on Hillsdale Street, and you can drive by my house in time and see that we're not a gated community where we live. We've, we've been in the same house, and we've seen a lot with some Section 8 rental housing right next to us down the street, and we've worked with those families over the years. We care about this city. It pains me to have friends on the opposite side of this issue. I know it's divisive. It pains me even more to see the kind of ugly behavior that's happened on social media and other places. I personally regret that deeply, but I do want to speak in favor of the ordinance and just add one reason to the various reasons that have been already mentioned, limiting the pool of eligible candidates. Pat Flynn is a great friend of mine. I've not even said this to him before, and maybe he'll get mad, but, you know, he's in finance and accounting, and he's, what, I don't know how many eligible people on that board are available for that appointment, but open the pool of eligible candidates. There are so many great people in this city. Why restrict that pool? I see that, I have nothing against the Hillsdale Community School Board. From what I can see, they do great work. We lose some of the resources, but it just makes sense to me. Expand the options and allow for the best selection in the city that we can get. Thank you very much. And I'm sorry in advance, I have to leave to get to some of the kids.
Thank you, Nathan.
Good evening, everybody. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for listening to me today. My name is George Allen. I live in Ward 4 with my wife and three children. While I am currently serving as a member of the community library board, I am not speaking today in that capacity, nor am I acting on behalf of the board, which has not chosen to offer an official opinion on this question. I'm speaking in my private capacity as a city resident. I'm here to speak in favor of the library ordinance amendment from Councilman Palladino, and I offer the following three remarks and explanation. First of all, the ordinance, as written, diminishes the mayor's authority to choose whomever he deems fit for the position. We recently had a situation in which the mayor informed the school board of his choice based on the available applicants, and the school board informed the mayor that they had their own procedure for making that selection, and he could not simply choose whomever he thought best. I respect Mr. Flannery's decision to step away from the appointment, saying he did not want to create a controversy. However, the only reason a controversy would have been created in spite of the mayor's preference is because of this restriction of the school board's ability to make committee assignments, which is their right, and I have nothing against that. But without that being a factor, the mayor could have made the decision based on his best judgment of who would do the best job, who would be acceptable to the community, and who would be acceptable to the council. And instead, he was given a candidate that proved divisive in the community and divisive to the council. Second, while township residents may serve on the school board, only city residents may serve on the library board, further limiting the pool of candidates available for library board appointments, which has already been mentioned in Mr. Palladino's address. Third, the city of Hillsdale has come to many families who send their children to private schools or charter schools or who homeschool. Those families also use the community library, and there is no reason to privilege the Hillsdale Community Schools system with a special say in the governance of that library, when so many families with school-age children are not participants in that system. And it was mentioned earlier, well, you know, residents who don't have schools in the community libraries can still run for those boards.
Your time is up, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, George.
Good evening. I'm Jason Gerke. I live in Ward 3. I rise to speak in favor of the proposal, and I'd only make one observation. It seems that many people in the room think that this particular decision is a proxy decision for some other body of decisions. It seems to me that the future is uncertain, however, and what comes of any other concerns is separate from this particular thing. So if you, if you're for or against the proposal because you think that it determines the outcome of some yet future undecided issue, that seems short-sighted to me. The future issues could go either way. This particular one seems to be a simple question. Should we have more people from the city potentially eligible to be on the board? That seems to make good sense to me. I think about someone like my wife, who often takes her children to the library, many other people like that. She's a homemaker, but might be a great option for the board and have insight into a whole sector of the community. So I'm for the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you for hearing this out, ladies and gentlemen, this evening. My name is Jonathan Mummy, and I am a resident of Hillsdale Township, so I will keep my comments utterly brief, but I did want to speak shortly to one of the objections that Councilman Palladino raised in his opening remarks. And though this may have some, I suppose, negative financial repercussions for my family, which includes four children who use the library regularly, I would still encourage you to support his amendment simply on its own merits. It seems to me that we really want government as close to the selections of the people as we can get it, and so even if this costs me a couple bucks more in years to come, that principle alone, I think, is worthy of considering on those merits. Thank you.
I'm Tara Scott, and I'm sure all of you guys know me because I've emailed you, and I'm actually between wards. I have a house in Ward 4, and I'm also renting a property in Ward 2 right now. And I just want to say a couple things. I am obviously not in favor of this ordinance, and I hope you guys vote accordingly, but there's a lot of, I hear a lot of people like, oh, these home schools, they need to be brought into the mix. They had an opportunity to run. That school board, there was two school board seats open, and the two people that ran got on it. So everybody who was here that says that they know somebody in the school board, you know, community or homeschool community that should be on the board, they could have ran. And when the next election cycle comes open, they can run them. I'm really frustrated. I just want to say, I never see this much support from the library. I'm actually on the board for the Friends of the Hillsdale Library, and since there's so much great interest, I just want to let everybody know we have a fundraiser going on right now. So since there's so much interest into the library in this meeting tonight, I mean, please help us in other ways, too. We buy vacuums and all sorts of upgrades, things for the library, and there's other ways to support your library besides being on the council seat.
I'm David Diener. Thank you for listening to us this evening. I just want to offer a brief reflection on what's happened tonight. To me, this seems like a relatively straightforward and common-sense proposal, the amendment, and I would, again, just reiterate that the vote is simply about the amendment. So our first speaker predicted the way that this would go, and I think that has borne out. The reasons that I've heard in favor of the amendment have to do with the principles of legislation, the scope of the mayor's authority, issues having to do with taxation and fair representation, government entities and their appropriate relationships, et cetera. Well, the arguments against this proposal have involved a number of legitimate points that are nevertheless complete red herrings to what is in question tonight. We've heard about censorship. We've heard about the right to parents to choose which books their children read. We've heard about the process for other community schools We've heard about the process for other community schools' board member elections. We've heard imaginative questions about who has library cards, about whether or not Dan is a good guy and should be on the board or not, or about parents' motivations in choosing which school to send their children to or when to use public school services. This is not a referendum on the public school system. This is not a decision about what books should or should not be in the library. This seems like a really common sense, straightforward, proposed amendment to me, based on good principles of government, and I would encourage you to vote in support of it. Thank you.
Hi, Brianna Kell, Ward 4. Before I get started, a couple things. Mr. Schleter mentioned that Pat Flannery was finance and accounting, so is Dan Flannery. And I also don't feel like he is the person who should probably be apologizing to the city right now. The school board is elected, but we talked about how they're saying it's just emotional. Has anyone done the research? Because American Library Association has released many studies and reports, which support the data and studies that show the relationship between public schools and public libraries increases the betterment of the community, the city. The collaboration not only adds value to the services, greater opportunities, people use resources more effectively and widely. Though our entities are separate, the Hillsdale Community Schools and the Hillsdale Community Library, they both work together in a symbiotic relationship. So, common sense, find your research, look at the facts. Go straight to the ALA website. Thank you.
Thank you, Brianna.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jeremiah Regan. I live with my wife and five children in Ward 3. I have a practical point. Hundreds of thousands of books are published every year. Because the library cannot afford to buy or house all of these books, the library director must decide which books the library will acquire. While the director will, of course, rely on her best judgment, like every other employee in every line of work, she is accountable for her decisions. She is accountable to the library board, which is appointed by the representative of the people, the mayor, who is directly accountable to the people through elections. The mayor's authority over board appointments, which ultimately is the people's authority over board appointments, should not be limited to four of five seats drawn from the general population, with the final seat drawn from the small pool of school board members. All seats should be drawn from the general population of Hillsdale citizens. This does not exclude school board members who wish to serve on the library board. It merely puts them on an even footing with all other candidates. The library belongs to the people of Hillsdale, not the school board or school system, whatever merits they may have, including their own system of libraries. And curation and other library management decisions should likewise belong ultimately to the people of Hillsdale as a whole. With this in mind, I ask you to support the proposed ordinance change. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Hello, I'm Barry Hill, Ward 4. I've spoken to you before. On behalf of this amendment and things, I would encourage you to vote against it. A lot of people have talked about it. The yay people, I believe, have looked behind the smoke and mirrors that started this all. This has been going on since January. Normally, and I've been in this city for a long time, been on some of these boards, normally that name is presented, goes to city council, the next meeting is approved or disapproved. This came in January, finally made it to the agenda in March of this board. Where has it been for three months? What was the issue? There's another agenda here, folks. And any of you that looked at the council agenda and Council Packet for this meeting saw the Freedom of Information Act emails that were out there. There's another whole agenda behind this. This just didn't happen. The people that say, you know, taxation, law, representation, you could run for school board, so now we're gonna change it, change the ordinance because a certain bunch of people didn't get their chosen candidate. And a couple people in this board at that meeting said, if Patrick would have been on, if Patrick would have been up for a vote tonight, I'd have only guessed. So, why are we here? Because that vote didn't go all the way if some people wanted it, and the rest of you voted to change the amendment. So, you don't like the outcome, change the rules. It's ridiculous. Vote no.
Hi, Mayor Stockford and members of the city council. Thanks for your work, and I know at times it can be thankless. But I'm a resident of Ward 3. My wife and I and our child live there, and we are library patrons of the Hillsdale Community Library. I don't have anything to add except that I do support the amendment, but I'm also just really grateful for the American right to stand up and contradict each other all night. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanna Springer. I live in Ward 4 with my husband and five children. I asked of the council about yes on the proposed change to the city ordinance governing library board membership. The school board has its own interests and its own library. I would like to separate the two boards to allow the library board to function solely according to the will of the citizens of Hillsdale. I am a director of a public school program, and I know how many outside interests are involved in a school. The state of Michigan and the teachers' unions and other organizations and institutions heavily influence actions of a school board. I do not want these entities also to influence our city library board. This school board does not represent all of the people that use the library, nor all of the children of the city. The school board should not control the seat of the library board. I would like this seat to be open to all residents of the city. The mayor should be free to appoint the members of the board as he sees fit. I love our library board, and my tax money buys the books and supports its operation. The content in the library matters to me as a taxpayer and a mom. The library is an arc of culture for our community. We need to be careful that it reflects the values and beliefs of the majority of the residents by the direct appointment of the members to the library board by our elected mayor. If I have a moment, I just want to say a word about Josh. I know Joshua and I know that he works for the city and the library for his own children and for all of our children. Calling his actions political, I think, misunderstands the depth of his good intentions and the absolutely grassroots effort to tend and curate our community's book collection. Thank you.
Jeff Cooley, Ward 3. I don't really have anything new to add. I do believe that we're only here due to revenge. Certain people didn't get the candidate that they wanted nominated. If Mr. Flannery had been nominated, we would not be here tonight having this here. So, I urge everyone to vote no. Mr. Sharp, I know I can count on you. Mr. Wilson, I urge you to vote no. And hope the rest of the council will follow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Yax from Ward 4. And I'm for the amendment. I think it should be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hey, my name is Kelly Cole. I don't currently reside in the city, but have in the past. I thank you for your service to our city. I ask you to support this proposal and open all positions to all people who pay taxes to the library. I under, as I understand this, there is nothing about opening this seat that would prohibit anybody involved in the school district or even serving on the school board to apply to be on the library board. I think the point's made earlier about having someone with knowledge of disability and accessibility issues is a very good one. It is important, but this does not have to come exclusively from a school board member. I love books. I love to read. With seven kids, I've paid a lot of fees to this library. And I think that I just encourage you to support this proposal and to go out and to find the best five people you possibly can to serve the library board. And as has already been stated, I also encourage everybody in this room to do all that we can to support our local library. Thank you.
Liz Webb. I live in Osseo, but I'm a card-carrying member of the library. How did we get here? After Ben Franklin and his friends started the first subscription lending library in 1731, Andrew Carnegie generously gave up his steel and oil money to build 1,679 libraries across the United States. Our own Charles T. Mitchell wrote his will in 1895 and gave his home to the city of Hillsdale to use as a library after his wife passed. Along with the house and $10,000 for the upkeep came his own books, and those are the Ladies' Library Association of Hillsdale, to which Mrs. Mitchell belonged. In that will, it states, and I've read it, "The library board will be composed of the members of the Hillsdale School Board." In other words, the school board was the library board, with full control of the funds, personnel, and policies. That arrangement worked well for 50 years, until a new city manager came to town, or the mayor, Meyer, M-E-Y-E-R, I guess, reduced the input of the school board to one of five on the library board in 1978. Why? Why was that done? It was because he didn't think the library was getting full use of the funds collected as fines. People who know tell me that the school board granted free library cards for the children of K-12 in the Hillsdale schools and the tenure of then-librarian Japlin Gelsor Morris. Mr. Mayor evidently didn't like the lack of income because those children weren't paying for their library quarters. So, why do we tell you about this tonight? We have our current library because of his original request of building books, bucks, and library card benevolence. You might ask, wait, who cares what Charlie Mitchell wanted? I care. These people care. This is our precedent in our historical Hillsdale. It matters to them. It matters, and I hope you vote against this amendment. That is, again, a person from the outside of this community wanting to change who we are, what we are, and when we do what we do. Thank you.
Hello there. Candy Carter, Ward 4. I prepared something to read tonight, but to be honest, it's hot garbage, kind of like this proposal to amend. To amend the position for the library board. The old adage is, if it ain't broke, why fix it? I've heard a lot of, well, this could happen, and this person could be from out of town, or we could have a vacancy. Has that been an issue in 20 years, that all of a sudden now, this must be changed today? We are here today. This has nothing to do with anybody else's personal agendas or furthering getting somebody on a seat next to them that's going to agree with them and help them keep their position. This is all about the kids, right? And keeping our library in the best interest of the community and representation from everybody? I highly doubt that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brad Porter. I live in the third ward. I've lived here since 1979. So, I've been here a long while, and I've seen a lot of these things happening. And you're gonna vote your conscience on this. And I hope that you're voting after considering the turnout, the opposition, those in favor. I'm not gonna take a position on it right now. I have a position. But I would just like to say, don't politicize the library, and don't make this a political decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Jose Revolo, Ward 1. We just heard from someone who said, don't make this issue political. But content decisions are always political. What you teach inside a classroom, the books you read, those are political decisions. And they should, in our democratic society, those political decisions should pass through the representative organs that we have in place. I think it makes sense to have this ordinance pass. It puts representation closer to the people, and it recognizes the true nature of what we are doing when we make content decisions. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
My name is Greg Kurtz. I live in Ward 3. And I urge the council to vote down this proposal. And as the gentleman just said, it's political. It is political. And the reason it is, Mr. Valero should be on the school board. I mean, on the library board. The reason he's not, I think, is because he's a Democrat. And I think that's, and it's political. And Mr. Sharp, who is a Democrat, said he would be, he would more than welcome being appointed to the school board. But I think it was the last council meeting, and Mr. Stutzel said that would never happen. He would never vote for him and put him on there because it's political. That is political. And you guys, and you have made it political. And I think you have an agenda, along with the mayor, to, as we know what I think it is, it's gonna be, get on there, get the people you want on there. It's gonna be damned if it's gonna be a Democrat, and you want to ban books, and that's exactly what's gonna happen if this proposal passes. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Jim Bowen, Ward 2, not Ward 4, as I previously identified. My apologies. There's been a lot of talk, and Joshua referred to it in his opening statement, about this restricting the ability of the mayor to appoint someone. However, stop me if I'm wrong, the mayor cannot arbitrarily appoint someone to the library board. It has to be approved by city council. So, that does not apply. It's also stated that taxation without representation. Library board member must be a city resident. You have a city resident representing the school board. How is that taxation without representation? There's still a city resident. And I believe, based on my experience as being a life, as a Hillsdale Community Schools board member and library board member, we are committed to doing what is best for the We was talking about accountability earlier. Does that apply to library board members? I sat at a library board meeting last May, when out of the blue, unsubstantiated attacks were made against the library director. And as you've seen in your FOIA request, two existing library board members took part in that. Someone said the values of the library should reflect the majority of the community. I have a problem with that, because that can lead to restriction in spite of the best efforts. And I believe that restriction of books in any way most certainly can and does affect some of the most vulnerable people in our community. I urge you to vote no.
Thank you, Jim. Any more public comment?
Hello. I'm Calvin Stockdale. I was a resident of the city up until this year, since 2007, and now I live in the township. Our family of six kids, my wife and I, all have library cards and still use the library regularly. I would urge you to vote in favor and support this amendment. I think it's a great idea. Thanks for all you do.
Thank you, Calvin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Colin Brown from Ward 3. I encourage you all to support the proposed amendment. I'm in favor of it for the sole reason that I would like to see the powers and responsibilities, especially the responsibilities, of our mayor and council strengthened, and I believe this amendment furthers that. The mayor and council are the people's chief executive and legislative representatives. We entrust them, you, with the responsibility of acting for the good of the city. We expect them, you, to possess all the powers necessary to serve as able custodians of this good. These powers include the freedom to appoint and approve members to city boards and commissions at your discretion, including the library board. That doesn't mean you shouldn't take outside suggestions, and having suggestions from the school board may be appropriate, depending on the merits of a candidate. But I believe the ordinance at present- But I believe the ordinance at present is necessary to restrict the power and gives a body that exists outside your purview an unwarranted say in the city business. Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Good evening, my name is John Brooks. I live in Ward Four. My wife and I have lived in Hillsdale for about 10 years, and we have two small children, and wanted to make three brief comments in support of the proposed amendment to the city ordinance concerning the state library. First, I think that limiting the pool from which the mayor may nominate a candidate is prudent. The mayor's ability to select the right board members is especially important when there are significant decisions to be made. This is one of those times I don't think we should limit the city's options to make the right nomination. Second, by forcing the mayor to choose from so small a pool, especially a pool of people who already hold a board appointment, we are more likely to end up with a library board member who cannot give the library the full attention it deserves. I'm not criticizing any members of the school board. They live and work in our community, they love Hillsdale Community Schools, and many, if not all of them, have children currently in Hillsdale Community Schools. Serving on one board sounds time-consuming enough, let alone serving on two. I question the ordinance that would compel one of the seven school board members to serve on a second board if they might not have the bandwidth or the desire to serve on. Third, I think that the current ordinance is unfair to voters, to Hillsdale Community Schools and to the library. When we show up on election day and we look at the school board portion of the ballot, we, the voters, shouldn't have to be thinking, well, that person is a good fit for the school board, but is he or she a good fit for the library board? Or this person over here, he or she seems like a good fit for the library, but I don't think he or she is the best fit for the school board. It requires voters to put square pegs around holes while also doing disservice either to the school board or the library board by putting the wrong board member on the wrong board. Thank you for your service and your consideration.
My name is Mary Books. I'm in Ward Four, and I just got here late, but from what I'm hearing, what he just got through saying applies to the same thing as having a member of the council on another board. It's the exact same thing. Where does the difference, with their own school board or with their own council and on another board? Don't see any difference there.
I apologize for my appearance. I came from work. I did not email any of my representatives. My wife did not either. Pretty sure plenty of people that are here have emailed, but I wanted you to know that if you're voting strictly based on how many emails on one side versus the other, you can count us as two, but rather, my wife is home taking care of our kids while I voice our family's opinions. My name is Elise McConnell. I live in Ward Three. I'm a husband and a father, a small business owner, a veteran. I serve on the City of Hillsdale Planning Commission. I appreciate that we are represented by our elected officials and that that representation gives all of our voices meaning when it comes to our local issues. I'm in favor of this amendment to our ordinance as it gives our elected representatives that power we truly and dutifully give to them. You should all take responsibility for the power you've been given. Don't advocate that honorable responsibility.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. My name is Tripp Young. I live in Ward Four, and I'm also a library patron and a taxpayer. I support the proposed amendment for the simple reason that I think the library board, which makes use of my tax dollars, should be as close as fully possible, should be as accountable to the elected city of government as much as we can make it. I can't add anything beyond that, but thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us this evening.
Hello, my name is Aaron Johnson. I'm in Ward Four. I want to speak in favor of the proposed amendment, and I did want to speak to something that was said earlier about there not being a difference between a city council member being on the board versus a member of the school board. I believe the, what's written actually says that not more than one city council member can be on the board, meaning it could be zero. But it's an acknowledgement of the fact that having that sort of a, that sort of a restriction is, in practice, probably a bad thing. So I, again, I speak in favor of this amendment. I think it gives us the ability to select the best candidate possible to serve on the board. Thank you.
Penney Swan, Ward Four. I'm going to approach this in a different manner. Have you guys looked at who is on all the other boards in the city? Because other boards have non-city residents. I believe the airport board might even have somebody that doesn't even live in Hillsdale County. So if you're going to do this to this board, then you're setting a very dangerous precedence because you're going to pick and choose what board can have city residents and what boards can't. This is targeted legislation. That's not cool. Mr. Paladino is targeting the library and targeting the library board. If he wants city residents on boards, then he needs to look at all the, all the boards in the city. Planning Commission is a very important board, and we have a non-city resident on there. I think you need to say no to this, and if you're going to take only city residents on boards, then you need to table this and look at all the boards and take off all the non-residents in every single board. By the way, the Mitchell family is watching my feed, and they're not very happy about what's happening here. They donated a lot of money to this library. Thank you.
Honorable mayor and city council, I thought I better bring that up too, Tom. Went Hillsdale College, it kind of fit in. One thing, I think we're dealing with small man syndrome, possibly not, but I think it's there. I think the city manager has the right to appoint people. It might only be one person, but I think he has that right. So the mayor's not the only one to complain. I live in Hillsdale Township. I know Mr. Paladino thinks that we're getting a great rate, but we're paying double what everybody else pays for our tickets. We donate $8,000. We have 84 active cardholders. The college only had to pay $40 for theirs when they didn't have their library. Talked about taxpayers. I think that, and I know that I've talked about this, I know Mr. Paladino knows what I'm going to say, but people that rent in the city of Hillsdale don't pay taxes unless it's in their lease that their money goes towards their taxes. They don't pay any taxes. So anyone in this audience that's renting would not be able to run under what he's talking about because you're not a taxpayer in the city. So you're not really getting any representation. You're getting representation without paying any taxes because you're a renter, and you pay no property taxes, right? You agree with me?
No. Would you like to see my bill?
You do, but you don't rent.
Hey, hey, Jack.
I wish the firekeepers were given hives because I would be there. Birds of a feather flock together.
Thanks, Jack. Any more public comment? Go with ones. All right, we'll close the podium, and we will move into council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you start, I think it might be helpful, very briefly, I address just a couple of things that came up in public comment.
Sure, go, go ahead.
Potentially a little shorter. One, there's a statute involved, as Councilman Paladino points out in his, his statement that's in the Communications and Petitions section. And the statement provides, among other things, that the, there was a question about whether or not it has to be somebody from the city. It actually has to be a citizen selected from the citizens at large of the city. It's a city library, and that statute specifically says that. So that also addresses the picking wards and that kind of thing, from the citizens at large that the board is made up of, and I just wanted to make sure that you, that you understood that that's the statute, and there's nothing you can do in terms of an ordinance that's in contravention of that statute. I think the other item is... So that's basically it. So that addresses those items that people raised during the course of this, that it will say that we need to discuss because it actually has to be somebody from the city, and it has to be... And you're limiting all that, it's the only thing. I'm trying to remember the other thing that came up, the number of people. I think somebody suggested that you increase the number. It's limited to five in this case.
Thank you, Tom. Be available if we have any more questions, of course. Okay, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss on this? Council table's open. Councilman Trump.
Could you please clarify the reference for office, the fitness for office? The clarification for that, what is it? That was in one of the requirements that says in this proposal here. At large with reference for their fitness for office. What are we talking about? Are they Melis Stamo? Are they a Republican, Democrat? What is it? That's what, I'm kind of confused on that when they're requesting the fitness for office.
So that's literally on the statute. Section two, number one of the statute says, "If a city council decides to establish and maintain a public library and reading room under this act, the mayor of that city shall, with the approval of the city council, appoint a governing board of five members for the library and reading room, chosen from the citizens at large with reference to their fitness for that office. Not more than one member of the city council may be a member of the board at any one time." That's just a phrase literally out of the statute. The, in effect, what the amendment would do is make city ordinance mirror the state statute.
Thank you for clarifying that for me. I will say, since this amendment, or this was brought up, it's been 40, almost 50 years, and during that time, we've never had a councilperson on this board until now, and where it's brought us is the situation. So I'm going to leave it at that. There's many things I could say, but I will also remind people that we are also term limited here. So the mayor himself, he's on his last term too. So if we do change whatever, then we're going to have a new mayor in then 30 years. So just keep that in mind. There's a rotating seat unless we change that ordinance too, or that's for the voters to decide. That is not for us. So I thank you for your time.
You couldn't drag me into another term with this. Don't know why I did it this time. Thank you, Bruce. Councilman Stutcher.
I'll go first. First of all, I just want to thank everybody who came today. I want to thank everybody who sent the emails. I mean, I'm sure we all received a large number of them. I think one of the most compelling arguments I heard against the amendment was the Mitchell family. I personally want to thank the Mitchell family for all they've done in this community. I think they should be very proud of what we have in this community today based on their foundation of a library. Today, Hillsdale is probably one of the strongest communities in this country that has options to educate our children. I mean, we have a couple of really excellent academies. We have homeschool systems. We have co-ops. We have hybrid systems. It's amazing the choices we have. And in fact, every year, there are people who move from around the country to Hillsdale because of these options they have for their children. So I personally want to thank the Mitchell family for laying that solid foundation for what we have today. That is, I just commend them for what they've done. And again, the other argument I heard was historical. We don't have the same educational options we had 45 years ago. We have a much broader base. So I, again, I, I think this is sound legislation. It's based on merit. It's very simple, and I'm definitely for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Stutcher. Anybody else have anything to add? Councilman Muir.
I'm just, I am a reader. I don't have a library card though. But I'm just going by the current statute, and it's, "The library board shall consist of five directors appointed by the mayor with the approval of the city council." And I just feel that somehow through all these years that we've had this, the, and probably in other councils, that the school board has been allowed to choose who that representative on the library board would be. But that's not what the statute says. We're going to strike that part. Why? Because of the issues we have right now to fill that final seat. Just, you know, on the, the member being from the council, it's only up to one, it's not a guarantee. The, back when this was enacted, I think in the 78, we had no charter schools, probably homeschooling was pretty limited. Charter schools came on board in 90s. So the current ordinance kind of limits the other school-aged kids from any representation. Also, the fact that by striking this, it doesn't prohibit a school board member from serving, and for that matter, you could, you could have more than one. You wouldn't be limited from that factor. So it actually really elevates the Hillsdale citizen to really participate in this. And addressing Jack's comment on renters don't pay tax, well, most of the apartments in town, if they're not on the pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes. So they might not directly pay the taxes, but whoever they're renting it from is definitely paying taxes, and they are a citizen of this community as far as the renters. And I, for that reason, I think it just makes things a lot easier. I have to support this proposed change.
Yes, Councilman Muir, that is true. The ordinance does not say that the school board gets to choose their own representative on that board, which is where all this kind of turned from. As you guys all know, Mr. Jansen FOIA, the emails between me and Mr. Bandra, if you guys read those carefully, you will see that I said that I thought Patrick Flannery and Dan LaRue were problematic appointments. If you didn't see that, you might want to go and read that over again. I gave the reasons why. I asked Mr. Bandra for cooperation with the school board, correspondence with the school board. I got none, and I don't blame anybody for that. I, you know, things fall through the cracks. Ideologically, I mean, idealistically, I would have been conversating with the president of the school board, not the superintendent, because the school board is not overseen by the superintendent. The superintendent is overseen by the school board. So I want to tell you guys, a local office turns people into cowards. It really does. And I acted cowardly in this. The reason it took three months is because I purposely kept it off the agenda because I, I knew in my gut that this was what was going to happen. I knew it because I'm the mayor, I have a pretty good finger on the pulse of this community. I talk to a lot of people, you know? And, you know, I, I have immense respect for Sean Bandra, an immense respect for the Hillsdale Community Schools, and my children who are public school, and, you know, I didn't want to put my foot down and say, no, I'm not making this appointment, Sean, because it's going to be problematic at council, but I, and I apologize to you guys about this already. I would never bring forth an appointment that I thought was going to fail. And I did this time because I wanted to acquiesce to the school board and to Sean, to show them my respect. And you guys have also all witnessed me saying my ground out appointments. When Tifa has said that they wanted a certain person appointment, I said, "No, I'm not going to appoint that person." Councilman Palladino was a library board appointment. That was a recommendation from the library board. The next time they made a recommendation, I said, "No, I'm not going to appoint that person." I had my own person I'm going to appoint. And Mr. Kersey was a Democrat that I appointed on the board last time. As a matter of fact, I've appointed Mr. LaRue to already to the zoning board of appeals, which is another reason that Dan wouldn't have been my pick for the school board because I don't like making multiple appointments to boards. This is a big city and it's unfortunate when we have to, when we have to search out and find people to serve on boards when there's such a big pool of people that we always seem to be recycling the same dozen people over and over on boards. And I appreciate all of those peoples. These boards are volunteers. So I appreciate all of them stepping up and contributing to the city. But I would love to see greater interest in serving on boards. Yeah, I think Dan LaRue's a great guy. Thought enough alone to bring him forth for Zoning Board of Appeals, but he wouldn't have been my choice for school board, but for the library board. But I could have avoided all of this by, at the very beginning, saying, which I did say to Sean, "No, Sean, this is my appointment. This is not the school board's appointment. I know how the ordinance is written. And it's very unfortunate that other mayors in the past allowed their, the little itty-bitty tiny bit of authority that they have, which the community thinks the mayor has a lot more authority than they do. But the mayor has appointment over authority, over appointments. And bringing forth, you know, the hiring clerk, police chief, city attorney, with council approval with all of those. And Jack was like, "Dave has one board he gets to appoint to. Hillsdale Housing Commission." So, and to state, to Penny's point, different boards have different, different boards have different, different requirements. Thank you, Councilman Veer. And the airport committee, when we put that committee together, which is a relatively new board, we did not make being a city resident a requirement. But the library board, that is a requirement. I don't know about planning commission. I would think it would be a requirement that you would be a city resident. So if we have somebody that's not a city resident on planning commission, we need to look into that because I do think that is a requirement of the planning commission. So yeah, here we're at. I tried to salvage this. I called and talked to Nicole Hoffman. I asked her personally if she would serve on this board as the school board's representative after all this happened. I thought maybe bringing an alternate appointment forward and having it be the school board president might be something that everybody could live with as a compromise. And Nicole told me that she wasn't interested in it. And as a matter of fact, she wasn't, she didn't think anybody on the school board would be interested in serving on the library board anymore at all because of the controversy that's happened here. So it's very unfortunate. And, you know, I apologize for the part I played in it and I recognize the mistakes that I made. The biggest one at the beginning, not just putting my foot down and saying, "I'm not going to bring a problematic appointment to city council that is going to fail or even has a high chance of failing." That was a failure on my part. So I can just discuss this any further, but as I stand right now, I am in favor of changing this ordinance for all the reasons that I just stated. Because if I'm going to get all the crap for everything that happens on boards and all the controversy, I want to be the person that picks the person. Any more discussion? Councilman Morrison.
Yes, the, one of the arguments is that the school board should have a line of communication with the library. And I agree with that. That's not exactly the issue, however, because in order to support that link, the school board can attend meetings and make comments and they report back to the school board, et cetera. Question is rather whether the school board should be entitled to a vote. That is to say, effectively twenty percent control over library policy. School board already has one hundred percent control over its own libraries. It can appoint or disprove of any books in those collections. There's simply no reason for them to exert twenty percent control over the public library as well. A library that they do not find. This is one of the reasons why we have separations of powers in this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morrison. Any more discussion on this item? We heard from lots of public out there. Really great. Everybody showed up and said their piece. Appreciate all of you. Even though some of you I don't agree with, even ten percent of the time. I do appreciate all of you. Unless you have something to add to it, we need, if somebody either needs to make a motion or don't make a motion and the ordinance doesn't get amended, because nobody motioned it and seconded it. Dave, do you have something to add, sir?
I would like to ask the city attorney just to comment on the proper procedure for this adoption, if that be your denial.
Well, I think that you have in front of you the language that would be approved as part of the ordinance. I think the city manager's concern, which he related to me a little bit before the meeting today, was that the actual format is not in what would be ordinarily approved and adopted by the council. But I think you can adopt that language subjectively within the proper format for publication. If that's what you decide you want to do.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Dave. Robert.
Tom, just to clarify, the proposed amendment removing the requirement for a school member would make the ordinance falls directly in line with the state's requirements for the city having created a library board.
Yes, it would match directly with the language of the state statute. The current ordinance matches it except for the addition of the, having someone who's on the school board be one of the renters. All the amendment would do is bring it back to matching it with the state statute.
Any more discussion? Councilman Stutcher.
I'd just like to make a motion and will you adopt this amendment with the library ordinance?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Stutcher, seconded by Councilman Veer. All in favor? Any opposed?
No.
Can I get a roll call, though? City clerk.
Councilmember Palladino?
Yes.
Pratt?
No.
Sharp?
No.
Stutcher?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
No.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
And councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Six, yes. Wait, excuse me. Yes, six, yes. And three, no, excuse me. So it passes.
Thank you, Katie. All right, we'll move on. Excuse me, we'll close the public hearing. I'm now closing the public hearing and we'll move on to old business item A. Tree, land, pickup, street patching, verbal update.
Good evening, council. Mayor. So as of today, for a brush pickup or storm cleanup, I like to call it, we're about seventy, seventy-five percent done with the town. Our crews ended today on State Street, heading back to Oak Street. When we get back to Oak Street, we're heading back north. Kind of zigzagged back until they get over to McCullum. I'm sorry, McCullum and Park Street, which we should be done. Projected to be about another, probably four days and maybe hopefully finish up next Monday, Tuesday, if we don't get this week. I got some numbers I did want to share with you guys from over the past few years. In 2021, we finished brush pickup in six days for a total of sixty-four loads. Last year, we completed brush pickup in five and a half days for fifty-eight loads. And this year, in eighteen days, we brought in three hundred and thirty-two loads. So, and believe it or not, the averages per year, so in 2021, the average was ten point six loads per day. Twenty twenty-two is eleven loads per day average. And the guys are averaging eighteen point four loads this time. The big thing we're fighting this year is a lot of the brush is mismanaged. And what I mean by that is not cut to length to fit the truck. It's not stacked. You know, it kind of, as the city trees came, it fell away or it got pulled out. So the guys are spending a lot of time getting this involved up so it can get put back in the truck. So with that, and they're still making seventy percent strides on what we've done in years past. So any questions?
You're doing a good job, Jason. I know it's a real.
This brings up another point as far as, does the city currently have a shredder? In one of those two shredders?
We have a wood chipper, but this, this volume of stuff.
Does it work efficiently?
No, not at all. And that goes back to, it has to be cut down or, and imagine we'll throw it through the chipper as well. With what we have, a staff of almost six, people that do this work, we still have to get water turned on in the parks, docks put out and so forth. So this is kind of dedicated route. It's just not efficient to run it through the chipper. So when it gets brought back to our yard, when the town complete, we'll bring in a tub grinder. Big monster machine. It's going to be expensive, but they'll have a big claw and they'll just run it through a tub grinder and haul it out when the town completion.
Currently, Jason, are you getting short on space?
We are. So I would encourage everyone to go through the Compus second book. It's tripled in size since we started before April third. I'm still projecting the least. These are just projections. We'll talk to the guys and we'll look at. We're still looking at bringing in another two hundred, probably two hundred loads in the next eight days.
Incredible.
Absolutely. This is, I've been here, this is going on my seventeenth year and this is the most with all the storm damage that we've had. But with last year, the year before, in all time, this is probably more than I've seen in my tenure here.
Councilman.
Again, great job. And like I said, I know you guys have been running around like ticks on an angry scum. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman Zohar.
Jason, thanks for telling your team who expressed my gratitude.
Absolutely.
Could you just remind me, I think you said the numbers on the cost for the last two years and then this year?
Yeah, so I don't actually have cost. I have, I have days. So in 2021, it took a crew, and these are, it's a little different too. So in 2021, we ran a three-man crew and we got done in six days. So for the six days, we did sixty-four loads. Average is about ten, ten point six yards. And put that in volume, it's about four hundred and forty-eight cubic yards. Last year, again, this is in just another three-man crew, took five and a half days for fifty-eight loads, which is about four hundred and six cubic yards. It's hard to gauge cubic yards in the back of a truck, you know, because you saw the open space in there. And this year, in eighteen days, we ran, we tend to take away from the Good Friday that we didn't run. And unfortunately, with the break and we had a DPS, we were not able to run that day as well. So this is effective as a Friday of last week. So two, three hundred and thirty-two loads for approximately two thousand, three hundred and twenty-four cubic yards.
How many in the crew?
Pardon me, sir?
What, the crew size?
The crew size this year is four.
Thank you, Jason.
You're welcome, sir.
So with the, I'm sorry, sir. Continue, go ahead. I'm sorry.
With the, with the amount of entanglement and alterations to piles, that's why we had to put that fourth person out there to assist.
Sure.
Bruce.
You do a great job. Just want to make sure you remind people that potholes are there. We haven't forgot about them. We just are doing the best we can. You can't split the crew up most of the time. And you only have seven people.
Correct.
We are understaffed at the DPS and I'm just bringing that to you guys' attention. They've been understaffed for years. So you guys are doing a hell of a job and I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, there was a national news story on how many potholes there are in the country and all the damage it's been doing to wheels, et cetera. And it was all over the country. So we're not the only ones with potholes, just.
It's like when your foot's on fire, somebody walking up to you and saying, "Hey, you're not the only one with your foot on fire." Councilman Zohar.
To that point, I've had a couple people come to me and say, "Look, I watched the guys, they put the filler in the hole and then it just comes out again."
Sure.
The cold, yeah. So what would be a good answer?
Yeah, so let me explain that a little bit. So cold patch, exactly what that is. It's just a cold patch. It's a temporary fix. It works best when we have nice climates, we're having that freeze thaw cycle. You know, a couple weeks ago, we had the great weather. We got through town quite a bit of it. And then we hit that freeze cycle again with that moisture. Everything we did popped that we had. Not everything, but a lot. So what we've been doing is, we've been doing a couple different methods. So we've been filling potholes as things have been getting called in through what's seen by the crew and with what I seen out there. Our phone calls that we've had actually have been very low. Most of the patching is what the crew sees and helps. So the last, since April fourth, or I'm sorry, April third, we've put about nine and a half tons of cold patch in just to keep the worst ones from getting worse, if you will, and to keep odoris going. The other thing we have this time of year too, we're so close of the asphalt plants opening. Cold patch at a hundred and thirty dollars a ton and ash, which is only truly temporary repair, compared to asphalt, that is sixty-three dollars a ton give or take, which is more of a permanent repair. We're so close to there. I'd rather spend them dollars if we can get that far for a better product that's going to stay and be more efficient.
Thank you, Jason. Bruce.
Sorry I haven't called you lately, but I do, when I drive around town, see potholes and I usually leave them a number on, say, "Get your crew over here and you guys do a great job." So anybody in the public, it's six four nine one, four three seven, six four nine one. And you may get to talk to him. If you see a pothole or something, bring it to his attention because there's times the crews don't know they're there.
Absolutely.
And it'd be helpful just to let them know.
Absolutely. You know, we do a couple things, go and take a look at. Stuff, what we do is kind of softball and lower. We leave it till we get hot mix around. If it's dinner plate size, softball size like that, it'll get it filled within a reasonable time.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Dave, did you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to add that the DPS crew not only is doing the potholes and brush collection, they're the same ones, same six or seven guys that are doing, getting all the cemeteries cleaned up, which all have large trees on. So they're responsible for that, for cleaning up the parks, getting the parks ready for the spring, cleaning up the wharves and those things. So there, there are a number of responsibilities just besides the brush collection that they're trying to accomplish. So, you know, they're trying to manage that the best they can, but it's important for the public to recognize there are multiple priorities at any one time. And with a small crew, you just have to be patient sometimes. And I know it's hard, but I do want to give them some kudos because they've been really hitting it hard to try to get this done. So thank you and your guys, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jason. All right, we move out old business and into new business. New business, letter A, social district plan. This is a resolution. You'll have to excuse me while I get up into my packet, but I see Sam coming up here to save me. Sam.
Thanks, Mayor. So what we're asking council to do tonight is to establish a social district in Hillsdale and adopt the management and maintenance plan that staff has worked on putting together. So just a little bit of background. I know we've been over this kind of before at a previous meeting, but since we do have some new folks here in the audience, Public Act, I believe it is, Public Act one twenty-four, twenty twenty. uh, gives local government units the ability to create a social district and, uh, name a commons area. And this is a place where, uh, qualified licensees, so businesses that have, um, certain types of liquor licenses to serve those beverages on premises, um, can do so, uh, for folks to consume the alcoholic liquor within the commons area. So, off of their, um, off of their licensed premises. So this is something that a number of cities have adopted, uh, since it was first introduced. There are ninety-nine cities now in the state of Michigan and forty-one different counties that have established these programs. And part of the reason that it's caught on and it's become such a, such a big hit is it gives our businesses the opportunity to serve folks in a new capacity, to increase their sales in many cases. Um, bars, restaurants, those types of businesses were impacted tremendously by a lot of the shutdowns that we saw several years ago with the pandemic. Uh, it gives them another tool to recover for that, and as we look at, you know, more and more tourism coming to Hillsdale with the Indiana Rail Experience events and other summer festivals, um, we, we feel very strongly that this could be a, um, a big boon, uh, when it comes to commerce, and encouraging people to patronize it downtown, to shop there, um, and to, uh, to buy from these businesses. So, um, at the direction of the mayor, and, um, this was inspired, we had a number of businesses that, that came to the city, um, to the mayor, to Kelly LaPresta, who's my predecessor, and myself, and expressed interest in seeing if the city could do this to help them out. So, staff has spent a lot of time working on a plan, um, that would, that we would file with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, uh, which would basically regulate, um, how the social district would operate. Um, that plan was included in the packet for you guys to review. We also had the Community Development Committee look it over, give us some feedback, so Councilman Wolfram, Councilman Beer, um, they, they looked at it and, uh, provided us some great feedback, and so the plan that we have here tonight, um, is one that we'd like you guys to adopt, and the resolution would adopt that plan and then create the social district and commons area according to the map that's in there.
Great work, Sam, and I will say, before we get into voting on this, that, uh, when the businesses that really spearheaded this brought it to me, um, Felicia Finch had like, Fel- Felicia Finch from the brewery had like, everything done already. It was pretty amazing, she just brought it, she's like, here's what we want to do. Easiest job in the world, so, thank you, Felicia. But, uh, you know, Felicia, uh, the pub, um, the Elks is really involved in this. Uh, a number of them, as you can see, they're dotted on the map here, I think we see Rough Draft, um, the brewery, that is the pub. Kiefer, the Don, the Hump Club, the New Golf Place, and Broad Street Market, which is Blue Lakers. Oh, okay, well, awesome, great place too, so. All right, so, Counselor Soha.
Um, just one question, if this does pass, and in the future, a new restaurant pops up at the Hillsdale, Old Hillsdale Sea that was just purchased from Grant, would we have to bring an amendment before council to expand the parameters, is that even possible? Or is this sealed?
So, uh, what you guys would do tonight is basically establish the boundaries that, that are in this map. Now, at any given time, if council wanted to revisit this, um, they, they could amend the boundaries, and we would have to, you know, basically refile that with the state, but it is an option, and several cities have done that. So, um, a lot of times, they start out kind of, uh, with a smaller footprint, um, our plan kind of roughly follows the Tifa district boundaries. Um, it was, it was our feeling that, you know, it would be a manageable area, because the further you go out, the more you start to, um, increase requirements as far as signage and other stuff like that, so we thought this was a good place to start. Uh, but if we do have businesses that are outside, uh, we, we can take a look at that in the future and reexamine them.
Thank you, Sam, any more questions? Sam, these guys did a lot of work on, uh, Councilman Bellino.
I am a bit worried that this will unfairly draw business from out, outlying businesses. Um, you know, if there's a party going on downtown, are you gonna wanna go to El Cerritos or Johnny T's instead? Um, so.
I don't wanna go there.
Okay, but fair enough, but I, I am worried that it, I, I've heard these concerns.
Sure, sure, I understand that.
They're not, you know, this isn't me just thinking of this randomly, I'm hearing from people. Um, so I would like to see the districts run larger. Um, looking back at, at what I was proposing last council meeting, I do think that to-go, to-go alcohol law is still in effect and still allows people to take sealed containers outside of the business. So the business wouldn't be able to provide, um, open containers to go, they would have to be sealed to go, but as soon as they're off the premise of the qualified licensee, I believe they're able to consume that by their own means. Now, this would be an irritation, obviously, but perhaps not as big of an irritation as having to draw larger boundaries and put signage up everywhere. Um, yeah, just the idea of, um, I guess you would take a growler to go that's sealed, as long as, as long as the business sells it as sealed, the, the, the council could open it up more broadly to, uh, to allow drinking outside of those districts.
Okay.
So I just, just to consider that to make the, the hap- you know, we don't want any unintended consequences, I, obviously, I'm not suggesting anyone's doing that, uh, you know, in a malicious way or anything.
Thank you, Councilman Bellino, and we're looking into that, right? EDC, our, uh, economic development?
So.
Or was it public safety? Oh, community development, yeah.
So we, we did go over Josh's proposal, um, and, and our attorney did, um, give us some opinion on it. Um, some of those things, while we like the ability to do that, we can't based on how the statute is currently written. Um, with, with respect to the, the to-go beverages from, um, uh, businesses, that, that other additional law that was included with this, um, the, the intent there, and if you read that laws, those beverages would be sealed, let's say you go to a restaurant and order to-go, you know, if you went to El Cerritos, you'd get your food, you'd get a sealed beverage, you'd take that home with you. I don't think they, they don't provide anything in there specifically in that law, I believe that allows for, um, consumption in, in public.
And I, and I think actually the thing that you would run into is with the social district, the idea is to limit it to the, um, to allow those on-premises licensees to let people leave their premises, but you have to remember, if you have an on-premises license, you can't let somebody else come into your premises with alcohol they purchased somewhere else generally. And I think the social district has, the way I read that statute, is sort of the same thing. You can't bring, like, if you bought it across town, someplace outside the social district, you wouldn't be able to bring it within that social district when it was operating, because that's cannibalism to bringing it onto a licensed premises. So that's why they have you, not only have the thing that shows the, you know, some sort of marking on the cup that shows that you purchased it from one of those on-premises licensees within the social district, but also it should show that it's, uh, the sticker for the, uh, social district itself to show that you, um, purchased it somewhere within the social district and are constrained to keep it there and presumably purchase it there and bring it for something else.
Very good, any more discussion, Councilman Beer?
Yeah, another point I have, social district, is that it, it's kind of designed where you could take a beverage up to sixteen ounces disposable with the markings, as, uh, Tom just said, uh, and walk around the downtown or the social district area. If you got into including El Cerritos, the last thing you want to do is to encourage people to take your drink out of your establishment, jump in their car, and drive across town to another, you know, if the district is too large. So, it's kind of designed to really help, uh, rejuvenate the downtown areas, uh, and the downtown businesses would allow the people to, um, actually, and, and the time wouldn't necessarily be from, until closing time. It's usually from twelve to ten would be, so you're in there for lunch, you're in there for dinner, and then you wanna wander downtown, and then it's up to the each of the businesses to allow whether they wanna allow drinks in the, uh, businesses, but you cannot take a drink into another participant's, uh, establishment that actually has that licensing. So, you know, you can't be taking that disposable cup into, from, um, you know, from the public road down to, say, um, maybe Broad Street, Hump Club, or something like that. And it also leaves the, the council with, you know, depending on how this goes, if, if we're getting a lot of, where it's not working as we anticipated, or we're having a lot of issues with it, that leaves the authority with council that we can revoke that, uh, social district if it doesn't play out. But from all the things that, uh, we, uh, talked about in the, the community development, uh, meeting that we had, it seemed like a real positive for the downtown and to create, uh, encourage more people to come town, to the downtown area.
Thank you, Councilman Beer, Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, I, obviously, this is good for economic development. I'd just like to hear from the police chief on any potential law enforcement issues that might arise. It sounds as though there are many towns that do this, and, and it is manageable from a law enforcement perspective, but I just wanna make, you know, hear some assurances that it's, uh, going to be a good fit for Hillsdale.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let Chief speak to this, but just so you know, we, we did include him, as well as Jason Blake, our DPS director, in these conversations. So internally, we have went over with them, and he can tell you a little bit more about, um, about that.
Ever since the inception of talking about this, which is probably getting close to a year ago, at least last summer, um, I know at that time Kelly LaPresta reached out and spoke to a bunch of communities about this, and there was negative, nothing negative that came back from a law enforcement perspective. Um, the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police has a lift serve where, um, there's a lot of communication daily about many issues. It's been very limited on there regarding social districts, but last summer, um, a couple of emails were posted about other communities, because their communities were talking about starting social districts and reaching out for information about other communities that had social districts, and it's going police chief to police chief, and there was nothing negative stated from the law enforcement perspective on that. And from the publications that I get, they have to do with municipalities and law enforcement for the state of Michigan, there just has not been anything in there about this, so. I would say we would have to anticipate the same number of issues and type of issues that we have within our liquor license establishments within the city, and be very prudent, um, knowing where we're at, that there will be a few people that intentionally try to test the boundaries of this. That's with a lot of things that happen around here.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions, guys and ladies?
Uh, Sam, can you just, uh, repeat how many cities have these already in the state of Michigan, and then with the surrounding area?
Yeah, absolutely, so there are ninety-nine cities in the state of Michigan, um, spread across forty-one different counties. Um, all of our neighboring counties, um, various municipalities they're having, the City of Adrian has one, uh, the City of Coldwater, the City of Jackson. Um, I did reach out as well to the economic development officials, um, in those cities, uh, to get testimonials, I can share some of those with you guys, but, um, Coldwater has nothing but, uh, good stuff to say about it, how it's helped their downtown. Um, I think, I think a lot of cities are really seeing the, the positive effect of trying to get more people, more foot traffic downtown. And, you know, in, in concert with different festivals, um, the events, the train tours, we see this as a way for businesses to capture some of those dollars, um, from tourists and visitors while they're still in our community. And so, um, all of our surrounding cities have implemented this, um, Coldwater's had one since, uh, I believe it was around July of twenty twenty, so they were a very early adopter, and so they have several years of data, and they, they can share, uh, conveying concerns.
Counselor Soha.
I would just, I know it's not feasible presently, because I talked to the city manager about this, but I would love, and I, I would appreciate it based on Mr. Trippiano's concerns about Johnny T's, the city would just look into the feasibility, ability to maybe use the trail to his establishment. I know the city manager said that's not feasible presently, but if you could continue to look at that and see if there's options, I, I would appreciate it, I'm sure Mr. Trippiano would appreciate it.
Sir? Of course, we will. Bruce, Josh, you guys have something? Bruce?
Uh, I'm a little concerned with this, because the drinking and stuff, and the people wandering around, and how busy our police officers can be sometimes, that it may get, we won't have those tested, that concerns me. But also, if you wanna improve the downtown, you need to fill these empty buildings with something the people will come down and go shopping for, not only just drinking. We need more restaurants in this town, we need more activity, because you go out to eat breakfast in this town, your choices are limited. And this town, it isn't just about alcohol, we need to get food, we need restaurants in this town, that's the biggest thing. We polled the college a few years back, what they, the students thought Hillsdale needed, and restaurants was right on top of the list. So that's concerning here. I think what you've done, Sam, is great, your homework, you and Kelly, what you've done here is great, but I'm really not comfortable with this at this time.
Can I speak to that for a second? So, I, I would agree with your assessment, with your assessment, we do obviously want to, you know, fill all of our, um, any vacant buildings downtown. What I think you're seeing in a lot of cities that have implemented this, is this is actually a draw for businesses to move into the downtown. Um, they're interested in participating, they're interested in being located in a spot where this is another tool for their business. Um, so, I, I would say, obviously, we'll continue to encourage that, that certainly is, you know, gonna be our focus as well. Um, what we're trying to do with this, obviously, is just to increase the draw to our downtown. You know, there are studies that show the longer somebody's spending, you know, wandering around in downtown, the more dollars they end up spending at all of the other businesses. So, we, we anticipate this is gonna have a compound effect, um, and, and we're gonna be excited to work with any restaurant or business who wants to move into that area and, and participate in this.
One other thing, if you'd mind, please, have you been to Camden? They have one restaurant, and what else do they have down there, and what have they drawn in people from Indiana and Ohio for a certain purpose? Well, I hope that we never see this in Hillsdale that way too. Alcohol's one thing, but the pot issue's another, and I hope Hillsdale never allows them in here for a tax base, because it will create more problems.
Thank you, Bruce, Josh?
Oh, Jesus, going back so far, we've been here selling, I'm, just, just to clarify, um, the, what I'm proposing, uh, Johnny T's, El Cerritos would still have to sell sealed containers, so it'd be no different than if they sold a sealed container right now, and you just got in your car and popped it open, it's a violation of the law. Um, so all I'm saying is the trail connecting to the social district be decriminalized for open alcohol consumption while you're walking during the hours that the social district is open. Um, so, right, once again, it's obnoxious, Johnny T's, El Cerritos, they couldn't give you cups to go, that would be a violation of the law. They couldn't encourage you to open this and take this out, but if you just grab your growler or your martinis and a sealed cup to go, and you happen to pop those open on the trail, that, that's what I'm saying. Um, obviously, we don't want drinking and driving, but it would be good, maybe just six months from now, once the season is over, to get an update on year-over-year disorderly conduct, drunk driving, that sort of thing.
Thank you, Councilman Bellino. Yes. Any more questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman.
I'd entertain a motion to pass the resolution.
Move on. Support.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Beer, adopting the following resolution, designating the social district the common area in accordance with the proposed boundaries outlined in the management and maintenance plan, establish the attached management and man- maintenance plan. That's all I hear, kind of a roll call, no police city clerk.
Councilperson Pratt?
Yes.
Sher?
No.
Soha?
Yes.
Sutol?
Yes.
Beer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sacher?
Yes.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
And Paladino?
Yes.
If they yes, one no, this resolution three, five, four, nine passes.
Three, five, four, nine?
Three, five, four, nine.
Thank you, City. All right. We'll move into item letter B, proposed twenty twenty-four special assessment, assessment district for street projects. Kristen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, in preparing for the twenty twenty-four construction season, we have to start the process of getting, establishing special assessment districts, and, and basically, the first step in doing so is for city council to direct me to start designing engineers and specific, or engineering estimates. and specifications for the upcoming projects in anticipation of what we're, what we're planning to do in twenty-twenty-four for the construction season. Currently, we're, we're potentially going to get some money to do Arch Avenue. We don't know if that money's going to come to fruition, but in anticipation of potentially getting that money, we have to start designing now, so that if that money were to arrive to us, we'd be ready to go out to bid for a construction project, and that would be on Arch Avenue between M ninety-nine and Mechanic Road. If you apply for a grant for that project for the, for the recent last, uh, last three years, and we've been denied that grant. It's for three tenths of a mile to crush, tape, and pave that section of roadway. There'll be a little bit of drainage work and some stormwater work associated with that project to address some issues that we've had in the past out there. But it will be a pretty simple project, but we need to start designing on that in anticipation, and hopeful that we get some funds. And then the second project is also a grant project. It's the Small Urban Grant. Um, the city, we are part of a small urban area that, that extends up to Jonesville. Uh, there are certain streets within the city of Hillsdale that are applicable to that small urban area, and the county is also allowed to use that money as well. So between the three entities, every, we get that money for two years. We share that money. One year, the city gets it. One year, Jonesville gets it. One year, the county gets it. We spend it on the roads that are eligible within that, in that small urban boundary. So we're proposing to reconstruct a section of West St. Joe Street from Bacon to South Street, and then to crush, shape, and pave the remainder of South Street from, or, I'm sorry, the remainder of South, uh, West St. Joe and Griswold Street from South Street down to Waterburgs Avenue, which is right next to the old copper and brass building.
As its wire.
I'm sorry?
It has its wire.
Yeah. Next to that old industrial building. So those, those, uh, those roads are federally ineligible and within the small urban boundary to be able to use these funds. The section from Bacon to South Street is actually not part of the grant project, but we want to reconstruct that section of road, because it's a highly traveled section of road and in need, and need to repair. So what I'm asking is that you give me direction to start designing on these, on these projects and move forth with that, and then within the next ninety days, I will be back to you with the design, the engineer's estimate, and the specifications to move forth in the process for the special assessment districts.
Thank you, Kristen.
Very well.
Yeah, you're just asking for permission to start, start up executing, doing essentially your job as an engineer?
Exactly.
What you were hired to do?
Yes.
And you need permission from us to do that? Okay.
Essentially, yes.
Any questions? Councilor Turner?
This is still on top of the project. We're not coming up on Westwood.
Yes.
Because that's the major one for the city, so.
Yes, unfortunately, that project has slid into twenty-twenty-four. Um, I have been in contact with M dot on these small urban funds, but my conversation with them to date is, is that once they obligate those funds, which they can do in October of twenty-three, which is their beginning of fiscal year, I have twelve months to spend it. I will argue that we probably won't be successful getting bidders because of the current bidding market. But they, as of this point, won't say they will move the money into twenty-five. So I'm kind of at the point where we have to do the design, we have to follow their process, and once we go to bid letting at the, at the state level through their process, if we don't get bidders, then it's going to be their decision to hopefully move those funds into the fiscal year twenty-five. If they do, in fact, want me to build it in twenty-four, and we do get a bidder, yeah, we're going to be busy next year.
Well, council's got to remember years back, this is why we hired Kristen and stuff, because we had a project, we didn't have, it wasn't ready yet, and we missed, we missed out on them. So this is why, this is the smart move in our parts, to do this ahead of time and be ready.
Councilman Soha?
Thank you, Mayor. Kristen, um, what is the name of that fund that we're trying to get the money from that we have to spend in twelve months?
That is the Small Urban Grant. Well, Small Urban.
And that's a state-funded grant?
It is a federally funded.
It's a federally funded?
It's federal slash state funds, yes. But that is Small Urban, yes. And that comes to the small urban areas, uh, for our small urban area, which is the Hillsdale-Jonesville urban area, every two years.
And to clarify, uh, to follow up, it's just West St. Joe, not East St. Joe?
Correct.
And it's just to Waterburgs? It's not the Culver and to Steenburton?
Yes. There are, there is, if you're going to go Google Small Urban and you look for our specific Small Urban Area, there's a very definitive delineation as to what roads are eligible within that Small Urban Boundary. In addition to that, they also have to be considered federally eligible. So these will almost a hundred percent of the time be city major streets, and obviously, within the Small Urban Boundary, which is coming right down M ninety-nine, a certain distance either side is, is where those roads are affection, or effectively what is eligible for those funds.
Thank you, Kristen. Dave, did you have something to add?
Um, just wanted to point out, uh, past Small Urban Projects, State Street, Fayette Street, um, uh, the la-
Um, that, so Fayette Street was the last Small Urban project we had, which was in twenty-twenty. And then prior to that was State Street. And I, and Jason may be able to say what was a, a previous to that.
Yeah, I think there were two, two State Street components that were done. I don't know what was in front of that.
And that, and that grant is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And we were required to provide a minimum of twenty percent, an eighty, twenty share.
The Arch Avenue, um, was the congressional earmark that Congressman Walberg estimated us for. Um, so we'll see if that comes about, but that's, I mentioned that to council previously.
Thank you. All right, questions? Motion on the floor for Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilman Morrissey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Roll call, though.
Councilperson Sher?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Sutcho?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Sacher?
No.
Councilperson Morrissey?
Yes.
Belladino?
No.
And Pratt?
Yes.
We have seven, two, one, four.
Thank you, Katie. All right. We remove item letter C, so we'll go into proclamations. It is Arbor Day. We are Tree City USA. So whereas in eighteen-seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed for the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting and heating, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, to go for our fires and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, now therefore I, Adam Elstock, for mayor of the city of Hillsdale, do hereby proclaim May sixth, twenty-twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the city of Hillsdale. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Okay, no appointments. Uh, one last thing, is a resolution recognizing Cheryl Cox for years of service. Whereas Dodge Ride Transportation Bus Driver Cheryl Cox is retiring after twenty-two years of dedicated service to the city of Hillsdale and its residents, and whereas Cheryl Cox was hired as a bus driver by the city of Hillsdale on August twenty-second, two thousand, a position she has performed admirably since her date of hire, and whereas Cheryl Cox contributed significantly to the successful operations of Dodge Ride Transportation and the city of Hillsdale's invisible public trans, transit department through her expertise and dedication to her duties. And whereas Cheryl Cox has provided a liable assignment transportation to thousands of Hillsdale residents during her career at the city of Hillsdale, helping her passengers reach their destination safely. And whereas during her twenty-two years of faithful and dedicated service, Cheryl Cox has earned the admiration and respect of her friends, coworkers, and the public. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the mayor and the council of the city of Hillsdale extend their best wishes and acknowledge Cheryl Cox by resolution for more than two decades of dedicated, unselfish public service to the city of Hillsdale, and publicly thank and commend her for her invaluable service to the people of this city. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting held on May first, twenty-twenty-three, and a certified copy hereof be presented to Cheryl Cox on behalf of the mayor and council with our utmost respect, affection, and appreciation. Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you, Cheryl. We will move into general public comment. During this time, the podium will be open.
Again, Karen Halt, I'm disappointed in tonight's outcome regarding the library vote.
Hold on for a moment. Sorry, Karen. Motion on the floor to, do we, uh, do we have a motion to pass the resolution? Motion on the floor from Councilman Soha, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Sorry, when do we start making these resolutions?
A few months back.
I don't remember. Just don't remember making resolutions, but all right. Okay, general public comment. Podium is now open. Please leave your comments in two minutes. Trips one to the podium. Podium's open. Sorry, Karen.
No, take two. I'm just disappointed in the outcome of tonight's election and voting regarding the library board. And I want to publicly apologize to the Fritchie family, if they're still watching on the live stream. Um, I know you mentioned the Mitchell family, but my Fritchie family name is also on our library, and I know that that does not represent their family's views, and they've been a major donor. Um, I'd also like to say that historically, um, I think we can all realize that there have not been multiple applicants for library board over the years. I have served on library board, term limited out after hiatus off the board. I was asked to serve again because there was an opening that could not be filled. In the years since, we have had openings, um, we were short board members a couple times. Um, we were scrambling, calling people, putting things on our library website, encouraging people to, um, be on library board. So certainly, people have had an opportunity to serve if they hadn't wanted to in the past. Uh, my concern moving forward is now we have lots of interest in the library board, and that's a great thing. My concern is that we are going to have people that have a personal axe to write on one side or another. I would ask that this mayor and this city council look at people that are applying and look to see if they truly have the interest of the library at heart, and they don't have a personal vendetta. They haven't been, um, overly zealous one way or another, but they truly care about our library and use our library, and they know what our patrons want and need. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any more public comment?
Uh, Timothy Green, again, Ward three, just want to say thank you for your work and the time you've taken to, uh, think about the vote, and, uh, not vote, but vote on the resolution. Um, and thank you for reading our emails and for listening.
Thank you, Tim.
Greg Kurtz, living Ward three, I'm disappointed that you passed that amendment, too. But, uh, at this time, uh, I would like to get some clarification on the Westwood Street Drive, Westwood Avenue. I know I've talked to Bruce about it. He said we might start this in two thousand twenty-four, and now I'm here, maybe two thousand twenty-five, if you give bids. And I'd like to be, you know, get a clarification, because I've been up here many years about this, and it's, it's getting really disappointing.
Sure, sure. Um, after public comment, um, after the council meeting. Or if you want to go over and talk to Kristen right now, I bet she would just fill you in on it, Mr. Kurtz.
She laughed.
Jason, can you fill, uh, fill in Mr. Kurtz, please? Because that wasn't the case.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm George Allen, uh, Ward four. I would like to extend my thanks, uh, to those of you who are doing the long and frequently thankless job. I'd like to express my gratitude for your vote on the matter of the library ordinance amendment. I do believe this measure to be in the best interests of the good governance of the city and its livelihood, regardless of whatever abuse you may be subject to as the result of this decision. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you especially, you're, you, you, you might catch it, and your continuing grace in handling criticism from all quarters impresses me. I want you to know that there are many, many people in this town who are very grateful that they can trust their elected representatives to do the right thing, regardless of the pressure they are brought under. So, thank you.
Thank you, George. Any more public comment?
I'm Sarah Yax, Ward four. And I think that it was said that this is the first time, I may have misheard that, because I was fiddling on my phone, that this was the first time that a councilman has served on the library board. And look at what it was brought to us. And I have to say, I'm really glad for everything that is brought to us. So thank you, Josh, for standing on the front lines and leading the charge for all the rest of us to finally know what to do to stand up for our community. And I want to thank every council person here that stands up for our community and represents the majority of the community, because it, our hearts really are for what's in the best interest of our children. And I'm going to be bringing my children to more and more meetings, because I come home and they ask me, and I, and it hit me, and I was like, I don't know what I'm doing, because nobody ever dragged me out to these long, boring meetings where everybody had things to say. And so here they are, and they're homeschooled. And so I appreciate the opening of, of, of more opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Any more public comment?
Well, I want to thank, I want to thank the council for approving the social district. I grew up in New Orleans, and now I can walk on the street with a beer in my hand, so thank you. I feel much more at home now.
Thank you, Stephen. Any more public comment?
My name is Felicia Finch with the Hillsdale Brewing Company, and so I'm here to thank you for approving the social district. This is going to bring more events downtown with more businesses involved into it, um, and hoping that they can grab a beer while we do our monthly foodie walks. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Any more public comment?
I would like to say thank you to Councilman Sher, Councilman Wolfram, and Councilperson Pratt for their no vote. It's a sad day in Hillsdale, because appears the college is dictating our city and trying to change it. They come to Hillsdale because they like Hillsdale, but all they want to do is change it. And I see Rob Soha smiling at me when I make my public comment. That's real nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Any more public comment? See you in a non-real close podium. Moving to the city manager's report. Dave?
I guess that.
Mayor, I'm not going to have a report today.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Council comment? Councilman Belladino?
I apologize again. I wanted to ask this during the special assessment district. Um, Division Three Special Assessments, the state law reference, Special Assessments for Public Improvements, MCL sixty-eight point thirty-one, refers to Act Three of eighteen ninety-five, the General Law Village Act. Does that govern us? Are, are we a fourth-class city, or what? Could you describe the relationship?
Um, no, you're not part of the General Law, no, you're the General Law Village Act. You have to be a General Law Village, which at one point in time, the city probably was, but you are subject to the Home Rule Cities Act and the Charter of the city before you. So General Law Villages don't have a charter or anything like that. The General Law Village Act, in effect, serves as their charter.
Should, do we need to amend this, or update the state law reference? Find out where this power emerges, emerges from in terms of state law?
You mean, you're talking about what it says in the code, the city code? They have a state law reference, so that's what it's set out. Yeah, the state law references generally are provided by the code compiler. They're not a part of the ordinance. Um, they're for reference purposes, so somebody like you or I, we want to see, okay, where did that come from? We can go look at that. My guess is that that provision probably was subject to the General Law Village Act. At some point in time, when that was passed as an ordinance, probably a village, um, and it's made its way, because generally, when you become a city, you go without the charter. You then have a provision that says everything we had as a law. You then have a provision that says everything we had as a law from when we were a village carries over. So, yeah, there would, you probably should have the code compiler do something to update that, because it would be subject to provisions of the Home Rule Cities Act and other applicable state statutes relating to special assessments.
So it's possible that the powers contained in the General Village incorporation act could have been transferred over by tradition?
Well, not tradition, you actually pass an ordinance when you, as a matter of fact, I think it's part of the process, I can't remember if it's an ordinance or something else. But the governing body of the now new city, when they become a city after they pass their charter, there is a provision that indicates then that they adopt that says that whatever we had as an ordinance from before, when we were a village, to the extent it hasn't been abrogated by the fact that we're now under the Home Rule Cities Act or under our charter, is still an effective ordinance. Because otherwise, you'd have to go through and readopt one by one every ordinance that you had on the books before.
That, that's my concern. The way that special assessments are written in the current law matches the General Law Village Act, although it does incorporate revised municipal finance act, public improvement funds, but, but the, the actual authority seems like it's being lodged in the General Law Village Act. And when you follow that out, it doesn't follow the same procedure for special assessments, as far as I can tell, as the Home Rule City Act.
That's probably true. So if indeed that's the case, if somebody wants me to look at that and determine for you whether I think there are changes you might want to make, I could do that.
Yeah, I don't think we're following the procedure outlined in state law, so I would appreciate that.
Sounds fair.
I would be happy to do it if that's the case.
Any more council comment?
We are fixing the roads. That was our solution, to find a way to fix the roads, was a special assessment or not, or we just, our roads have become Marion Street. It's that bad. So this is painful, but we are fixing the roads. And I've been on council since 2007, and that's all we've always heard, fix these roads, public safety. Those are the two main priorities in the city council, are those two. And we have done it. And we made, we adopted a special assessment for those communities years back. And it's, it's painful at times when you have to hit somebody and say, well, your taxes are going up $500. Or do you want to keep fixing your struts, your shocks, and all that? Because where I work, I'm seeing plenty of work there right now. Plenty of shocks, struts, everything is being broken because of the problems. I would love not to have to spend that kind of money, or even though, somebody brings their car in, it's thousands of dollars to repair them. So what choice do we have? And we did what we were brought to do, find a way to fix the roads. We would love to get grant money, but then there are stipulations to grants that even the mayor doesn't like the government telling us how to spend their money. I understand that.
Their money, that's our money.
Everyone wants the money.
And it's our children's money that we just keep borrowing more and more of and piling on top of them.
Or we can just have dirt streets, because that's, that's the way we're going if we don't do something. And it's painful, it is. But thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sharp. Any more council comment? Councilman Morrissey?
Yeah, well, there's a bit of publicity about a vehicle that was removed from one of our garages. And that's a citizen suggested that we might consider putting some sort of device that makes it easy to locate these bikes vehicles in the future.
Yes.
I don't know if, if that's feasible or anything like that, but if we could just look into the issue and see what we could do about that, if anything was possible. I was Councilman Sharp on the roads, by the way, I think he knows that, but I think we've got to find a way to fund them, and if we need to change a procedure in some way, I'd support it. Oh, and the other thing is, those children that are sitting there, I certainly hope that you will replace us someday on this, on this city council, because Councilman Sharp, and I cannot stay here forever.
Motion adjourned.
Say, hold on, Josh's counting it up.
We can propose a tax increase that citizens would have to vote on. It would have to pass with two-thirds to go above the 20 mil tax rate. But it would spread the tax burden across the board. It wouldn't come with such crippling interest, and the citizens would have a say on it.
I, I mean, this is definitely a conversation for another night. My only concern with that would be, we've started the special assessments, and even though I keep voting against them, oh, boy, it'd be really unfair to now to say, well, you guys got hit with a special assessment, but for now, from now on, we're gonna do it this way, so I don't like any of it, honestly. But that's really a conversation for another night.
That's raising taxes.
Good, good idea, though, Councilman Palladino. Any more council comment?
Got a motion on floor.
Second.
Motion on the floor for Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilman Palladino, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting's adjourned.